You're gonna wanna sign in.
I had this airport for, or this shirt for five, six years, I think. I think everybody down in the airport terminal.
This crowd is about though, campy homeless ordinance.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah.
Where's Missy? Can you hear that?
She's not, isn't she?
Yeah.
Any of you?
No, I didn't hear anything.
I don't think I've ever seen you guys at a meeting. No? Were you? I guess they missed you. She does that all the time, watching.
I'm sorry. Just don't go.
Hey Bruce.
Let me count occupancy, that's all I'm doing. Sam, what's happening? I look into White.
We're not looking at.
Looking at can down like this.
You want some chop?
Kenny, I'm using your table for just a second. Sure.
It's gonna be a long reading. Mm-hmm.
You're much above that.
Well, we know each other now. I'm Cindy. Yes. Kyle. Carl. Cindy. Do you know Jimba? E C K H A R D B T. It's a German name. My maiden name is. Yes. And that's. It's German. I don't know still, but I was raised in Oregon. My dad lives in our town. He's 121 years old. He's still alive. I kind of, after the last election said it wasn't gonna come anymore. But I'm coming to you.
I've been out for a while, twenty years. Formating different levels.
On the scene order. Those in charge, take your eyes, you're on the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to join, like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. As you come in tonight, which would be to my right and everybody else's left, there's a desk through those double doors. There's a sign-in sheet on that desk. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey. Kevin No. Grant.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Soha.
President.
Stu Cho.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
And Mary Sankar.
Here.
We have three.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into the approval of the agenda. City Manager or any council members have any changes to make the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support. Motion on the floor from Councilman Veer, seconded by Councilwoman Rat. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please understand during this public comment period, you can only speak on things that have a direct tie to something present on the agenda. If you are here for either of the public hearings, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, or a public hearing for the no camping ordinance, please wait until that public hearing for your comment. There will be a period for you to comment on either of those proposals. Podium's now open.
David Turner, Word one. Mayor's and members of city council, first of all, thank you for your service to our city. Your services appreciated. I respect your office. I respect you as individuals and don't envy the way you carry us public servants in the day for a living. And so for that, I thank you and I mean that. While you undoubtedly will hear a variety of views later during tonight's public hearing, I'd like to speak specifically regarding the placement of the no camping ordinance on tonight's agenda. So I'm speaking to an agenda item in this regard. Several months ago, a task force was developed and given the objective of conducting research and offering suggestions regarding the challenges involving some of our fellow community members experiencing homelessness. It seemed to be communicated that the insights which came from this task force would be then considered in the formation of our city's strategy when it comes to both promoting public safety and supporting those experiencing homelessness. It was understood by many that this task force would at least provide some input regarding the city's approach on this important matter in a way that would elevate the welfare of our community as a whole. With the inclusion of this potential ordinance on tonight's agenda, I'm concerned we may have created a situation whereby garnering future participation in any task force will be met with great skepticism by potential community participants because, as you can imagine, there is little incentive to participating in something convened to develop solutions when those solutions will not even be given consideration before council develops and enacts policy. In light of this, I would like to propose or encourage you, if possible, to table any vote regarding this agenda item to a later date after council has taken steps to consult the very task force and community members. It convenes to tackle this current challenge facing our community. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, David. Any more on the comment on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll close the podium. We'll move on to the agenda to the consent agenda. We've got approval of bills, city and VPU claims of April twenty-seventh, payroll of April twenty-seventh, city council minutes of May first, finance minutes of May first, VPU minutes of April eleventh, street closure request for the train event, it's very exciting, and Hill Pavilion completion. Thank you to the Hill fam for that. Dry Mar trucking pavement. Any discussion on any of the items present on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Veer. All on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Okay. We'll move into communications petitions. One moment, please. I'm gonna go get a paper agenda. Okay. Several of these, as a matter of fact, all of these are letters regarding the no camping ordinance. So I'm not going to read each one of them, or we're gonna be here even longer tonight. They're in the packet if you wanna read them. A few of them are against, a few of them are in favor. Any discussion on any of the items in the consent, in the communication petitions?
I found them useful.
They can cost them all from, yes. They were very informative. Any more discussion on these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing. The first one, public hearing A, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. So we're gonna open the public hearing. First, Dave, I'll let you take it away.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Director is online digitally, so if there are any questions I cannot answer, she can jump in and read it. So the budget that you have in your packet is the one that we presented in the first meeting in April. It's just in a more final format for the public and for the city council to review. In the budget, kind of the key takeaways from it is this budget does include five and a half million dollars for the Westwood Water Sewer and Infrastructure Project, Rogue Infrastructure Project, and two point seven million for water and sewer reconstruction projects. That's two, includes a two million dollar CDPG grant. So a lot of infrastructure work scheduled over the next year. It includes a new airport terminal, which we received a grant from the FAA up to two point five million for constructing a new terminal at the airport. We were able to increase the code enforcement budget for demolition up to a hundred thousand dollars, given council's direction to try to address more of the blighted structures and issues that we deal with with that, those type of units. It does include that we're working with the Community Development, the Mitchell Research Center to try to come up with a solution that we've been communicating on for the last year or so. A long-term solution. I think we're making good progress on that. This does include also the addition of a school resource officer where the budget would be paid for fifty percent grant, twenty-five percent from the school district, and twenty-five percent from the city. The school resource officer would be stationed at the Hillsdale Community High School. But work with other areas within the Hillsdale community. It also, the budget also includes the addition of fifteen megawatts backup power generation that will go split in the industrial park and at the Department of Public Services building site. With this addition, this will give the city and the VPU the ability, in the case of an emergency to actually, larger scale emergency, to actually generate enough power to power our whole footprint with either gas or biodiesel or diesel engines. So we're pretty excited for that. That was one of the items the VPU board and this council was very supportive of moving forward, being able to, for the city to support itself if there was a blackout nationally or locally. So that being said, in regard to the general fund expenditures, we're just, the expenditures are up about two percent for the year, which is much lower than inflation for sure. But sixty percent of that is the addition for the demolition that we've added to the budget. I was asked to report on the combination city manager, VPU director position and how that is saving the city general fund money. And it actually totals about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that it's saving the general fund. So that's taken the burden off the general fund to allow us to do things like more demolition and other things. So it seems to be working out very well. Additionally, just to report on the city's pension condition, we are about, we're at eighty percent funded, which is a pretty decent amount compared to many other communities in the state. One of the things we've done in this council prior and current have encouraged was transitioning our employees off the city's pension plan, defined benefit plan, to a defined contribution plan. And I can say that as of July first, all city bargaining units and non-bargaining units will be on a defined contribution plan. So we were able to accomplish that goal. That being said, I will open it up for any questions of council. But I think we've got a very solid budget that's accomplishing many of your major goals with minimal increases.
Thank you, Dave, and we appreciate the work the city staff on the budget. It looks great. And I want to personally thank you guys, especially you and the chief, or the school resource officer, because that was kind of a pet wish of mine and I thought it was kind of in the clouds possibility, but you guys never cease to amaze me. So I'm excited about that. I'm sure councils all had a chance to look over the budget. Are there any questions for Dave regarding the budget? Councilman Sharp?
No sidewalks this year?
There are no sidewalks in this budget because of the capital costs in the Westwood project. That is including sidewalks and.
Okay, that's true, but the last few years, we've always approved fifty thousand for the sidewalks and then we never did, we never got to it. So at least this year, we didn't put it in there because we probably never got to it anyway.
Well, the amount of sidewalk we're doing is attributed to a specific project this time, so that money is part of that project.
So is there any projects planned this year besides just a little touch-up over there in the Westwood Drive area? As far as chip ceiling or anything, is that included this year in him?
We are working on additional projects, I'm sure. And we also have additional grant, grant projects that in the industrial park as well as
Thank you.
Any more questions for Dave? Thank you, Councilman Sharp. All right, when we find, when we do get into a vote on this, we can either vote to approve the budget tonight, or we can, we have to have it approved before due, or we can table it and, and study it more and ask more questions in the future, but this is the public hearing. If there's no more questions from council, I'll open the podium for our constituents. Okay, so we will open up the podium for public comment during this time period. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please understand as this is a public hearing, the only thing you can talk about is twenty twenty-three, twenty-four city of the budget. And folks, because of the crowd that we have tonight, we are gonna be very strict with decorum. And I want you all to have confidence that if I tell you your time's up, I'm not being rude. I appreciate you all. I appreciate you guys coming tonight. Appreciate all your comments and opinions. But we will be in both of these public hearings adhering to a very strict three-minute rule. So the podium is now open.
Ted Johnson, on the budget, have you considered giving a cost of living allowance to our public servants? Police officers, firefighters, or street workers, people on the first and second floor, or just the three percent where in real money, they've been making less money this year than they did last year? did last year? I think you should include that in the budget to keep them sure that you really do care. I mean, there's a lot of back-to-blue, well, you know what? Let's put our money where our mouth is, and make sure that they do get a cost-of-living allowance adjusted for what's happening, so they don't lose ground in their buying power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Any more public comment regarding the budget?
James Galloway, my comment is about the budget. It occurred to me that if this no camping ordinance passes, there are some unfunded mandates to go along with it. The proposed budget, I don't think, has calculated the potential costs of securing ever greater public lands, and then perhaps, of course, cleaning up what people might find a man in there, cooking trash. You know, the Department of Public Services already takes care of the parks, takes care of a lot of trash in parks, there's a substantial cost to confiscate the property and cleaning it up. So the budget doesn't account for the expanded needs of the Department of Public Services and the Police Department. Should that ordinance pass, then I think the passing of that ordinance doesn't go into effect for another year after that, until you can wrap it into the budget somehow. That's my question.
Thanks, James. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we will close the podium. Back to the council table. Any more discussion on this? Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Dave and everybody who's gone through this. Can you take a look at it? How small was this compared to our own citizens and what we do to pay them? And everybody benefits from it. It's not single to a certain group of people or to a super organization. Everybody benefits from the parks, the snow, the woods, the sea. I mean, everything you have, it applies and it helps everybody. So this is good, and our willingness to respond to it. So thank you.
Very true, Councilman Stuccio, thank you. Any more discussion, questions for Dave? Any questions for Karen online? Thank you for joining us, by the way, Karen. Okay, what do you guys want to do? You want to approve the budget tonight? Keep in mind, we approved the budget, we can all do amendments, we do every year, so, or we can wait till, we just have to have it approved by the first meeting in June. Motion up the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp, to accept the proposed budget. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Grant?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
7-0 approved.
Thank you. I noticed there's two resolutions on here, so do I have a motion to approve the second resolution?
The move.
Motion up the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha, to approve the second resolution. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grant?
Yes.
7-0 approved.
Thank you, Katie. Well, there it is, folks. That's the most important thing we do out here, right there. All righty, we will close that public hearing, and we will move into item B in Introduction and Adoption of Ordinances, Public Hearing, Public Hearing, No Camping Ordinance. Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming out. We've got a lot of community interactions the last few months, and so that's always exciting and welcome. So I just want to address the one gentleman's point, I'm sorry, your name's slipping my mind.
David.
David. Nevertheless, for the task force, it is our hope and expectation that task force continues its mission to get agencies that have tremendous funding together to form a solution. This ordinance, we felt the urgency to propose it now, because there's a continued presence of things in our public walkways that are just unacceptable. For example, last week, at the gazebo at Mrs. Stock's Park, empty beer bottles, empty syringes were found as a gentleman was walking his children through the park. And these are things from a public safety perspective, we're trying to get in order. And camping on the trail there behind the Buick dealership, camping on the trail there going out towards Bobby's has caused considerable unrest among people with children who don't feel safe allowing their children to roam the trails alone anymore. For girls on track teams who used to jog the trail and don't feel safe. And so there is a safety perspective there, and we're trying to ensure that everybody can enjoy the trails all day, and all our parks and all our public walkways, and that they're there for the public use. That's why we've introduced and proposed this. We feel like it is solid, it is not our intention to criminalize anyone, it is our intention that...
Folks, we're not gonna do that tonight, okay? Continue, Robert.
It is our intention, thank you, Mayor. It is our intention to ensure that the city of Hillsdale maintains its integrity. Do you want to add anything, Councilman?
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Appreciate your guys' work on this, appreciate all the reasons for it. I really have mixed feelings about this, I really do. I've gone back and forth on it. Sometimes I wake up in the morning and I say, you know what? Saying no to this ordinance is saying that it's okay to have encampments on public property, and I do not believe that for a second. I believe it's a travesty, and I believe it's demeaning to the community who is asked to accept it, and to the people who are living in the tents. I think in the 21st century, the idea that we've got any percentage of our population that are housed, living in tents, is demeaning. I do have some apprehensions. Mr. Turner pointed out one that is very big to me, is that I took the time, we took the time, to put together this task force, to gather information, to come up with ideas. You know, I asked my own fiancee to be a part of it, my third trimester pregnant fiancee to spend time away from her family working on this. So I don't, I was really hoping that if we did look at something like this, and I knew that it was a distinct possibility that we might look at something like this, that it would come after at least some sort of recommendation or report from the task force. I would say my biggest apprehension is that, I'm a former Hillsdale college student, I hear the word ordinance, and my knee-jerk reaction is no, right away. We've got lots of laws on the books, I think that we can enforce to many people off public property. And I think at this point, there's not, if there's any people left camping on public property, then simply advise them to police out and have them say, you can't camp here, this is public property. And I think we have the authority, and I also think that we are charged with restricting and protecting public property. And I know Councilman Paladino said something about this, but I'll reiterate, you know, our esteemed attorney, Tom, says we need to have something to point to if we're gonna enforce something like this, but I just can't wrap my head around the idea that somebody could come pitch a tent in my office upstairs, and I couldn't say, you can't camp in my office, and they could say, show me the law, this is, I can't camp here. And then another big issue I have is the practicality of it, and this is completely 100% common sense stuff, is that I know we've heard that the prosecutor is going to prosecute, and we have heard that the sheer, and I haven't talked to Neil, but I find it hard to believe that prosecuting, a prosecutor's office with the reputation of making plea bargains and not even, not even being strict with the most vile sexual offenders in our community is gonna take a hard-nosed approach against people camping in tents. I can't wrap my head around that either. I think you guys did a good job on this, but I'm apprehensive about voting for something that I don't think is enforceable. But I don't know, we'll see at the end of this, however, because I have mixed feelings about it, and I support you guys too, and I support the idea that there shouldn't be people camping on public property, and I resent being put in a position where I have to vote for something that I don't necessarily agree with, or say that I think it's okay to camp on public property, because I don't believe it is. Any more discussion on this before we open up the public hearing?
I just have just a couple of comments, but one is that if you look at the New York Times Sundays, New York Times, the whole front page is about homeless. So this is not just a Hillsdale problem, this is a, and if you look at Venice Beach, California, in fact, my son is, he works for Fremont Watches, and they're looking for a place to set up a retail establishment in Los Angeles, and there were so many homeless people around the establishment that they just said, no, we're not gonna do that. So it has a number of problems. I also, I guess eventually will offer a, my belief that there were some excellent comments that I received, that probably all received, and that was in the packet, about looking at whether this should be a criminal event, or it was a, there was a discussion here, back to that, just to... Now my wife has shown me what I was saying, about that it might be moved to a civil infraction, and then maybe with a requirement that, like with the terrorist who does third drug courts, that what they have to do is show up at a drug rehabilitation organization or something like that. So I would, looking at maybe amending the proposed ordinance as we get later in the discussion.
Amending it from a misdemeanor charge to a civil infraction?
Correct, correct. So it doesn't become a record of your having violated the law, and make it harder for you to get a job or whatever.
Okay, and then, so if it was a civil infraction, Tom, and not a misdemeanor, then at what position would the courts play in that?
So if it was a municipal civil infraction, it would be akin to one of our code enforcement violations, that's what I think. It's a ticket, it's not a misdemeanor criminal charge, which means that the whole arraignment and criminal penalty process is not used. Instead, it's the municipal civil infraction statute that governs how it's processed through the court. Generally, what they do is, it's sort of like a traffic ticket, about the hearing options. They can either have an informal hearing in front of a magistrate, generally if we requested it would be a formal hearing. At that time, generally, I talk to whoever the violator is, and you know, we work out some sort of resolution, put in a form, and a voter signed by the court. Or if they want to go through a hearing, the court makes a determination whether or not the person is violating the ordinance. Court determines that they are, the court can assess fines and costs, the court can require that they do certain things to sustain compliance with the ordinance within some degree of reasonableness, and most likely requiring someone to show up at some agency or something that would not be in those things that the court would do under those circumstances. Drug court that are done pursuant to special statutes and such that allow for them to treat defendants differently. But we could explore that with the court system, you know, whether or not some of those programs might be applicable to them. But otherwise, it just could be a sort of like, a real infraction enforcement, it's governed.
Okay.
And it never materializes into a criminal offense.
Well, we, I mean, we already see how toothless our code enforcement efforts are, so...
Yeah, the strange thing is, and I don't want to get off on a big claim, because there's a lot of people who don't want to speak. Some people think that with respect to, say, for example, zoning violations or violations of the property maintenance code and that sort of thing, I just went through a county meeting a week ago, and there were some of the trustees, hey, I'm just like, you know, if this was a criminal offense, and toss people in jail for it, you might get more compliance, and my experience has been generally not the case. You can try all you want to make people do things, and if they either don't have the capacity to do it, comply, in the case of like code enforcement, sometimes if a person's a hoarder, you're not gonna get them to stop having junk all around their piece of property, because they have psychological conditions, not gonna be able to allow them ever to comply. You can toss them in jail all you want, if the person doesn't have the money to bring their house to compliance. Toss them in jail, it'll solve that problem. So generally, for those types of things, code, municipal civil infraction, actually is more effective, because you would be surprised, in terms of the percentage of people who actually comply and get the citations, it's much better than it is when you just treat them as a misdemeanor, and all the court can do is assess fines and costs, and maybe if they violate it, enough times, cost for jail. And you can imagine, or even things like that, the courts don't like to toss people in jail, even for a couple of days for someone to be alone with their property. And my assessment is, without having spoken to the judge, that, you know, in terms of throwing people in jail under this ordinance, they may not do that. I mean, they may assess fines and costs, and it could be a criminal conviction, but I would suspect you'd have to have several violations before they ever get to do it, send somebody to jail for it.
Okay. Any discussion, Councilman Sharp?
About three weeks ago, I was in New York City for four days and three nights. I got to see the homeless people. Our group was accosted by one gentleman, and it came up and called us everything you didn't want to hear. There was 19 of us, and we were right by New York University. Fortunately, our tour guide was about 6'5", 300 pounds, stepped in between him, and gently reminded him he shouldn't leave. But I've seen the homeless people there, and we felt threatened there in New York City. I've never felt threatened in Hillsdale by the homeless people. They just want to be left alone, that's it. But I don't, I'm not for being on public property either. A campground, it's not a campground, a beach, those places, that's what concerns me. But I want to hear what everybody else has to say first, and that's just what my view is. I just wanted to mention, I've seen the homeless go to New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Yeah, I've never felt threatened by them either, but I definitely, most certainly don't try to be judgmental of anybody if, you know, I'm walking around town with a 380 and a big German shepherd with me, so I don't feel threatened by anybody that I come across, but I am most certainly not gonna be judgmental of a, you know, single mother that's riding a bike with a top or on the trail or something like that. So I really do understand those concerns from people. But I mean, I would say that ordinance, no ordinance, I don't know how much control that's gonna have over who is spending time on the trails during the day, so... Any more discussion? We can discuss stuff after. Okay, well, let's open the, let's open the podium then. All right, during this public comment period, please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please understand that all you can speak on is the no camping ordinance, and folks, I know this is a passionate issue, but we are going to be respectful. I don't want to hear any cussing, I don't want to hear any name-calling, I will remove you if I hear it one time. We're not having a meeting like that. Thank you. Thank you. Podium's now open.
Good evening, Council. Stephanie Myers, Ward One, and Chair of the Homeless Task Force. I am coming in tonight to, thank you, to speak on a couple of different sides of this. First and foremost, as Mr. Turner had said earlier, I have had several members of the task force, even members of the task force who, in my personal assessment, having spoken with them, probably would be in support of this ordinance, who are disappointed in the fact that they signed up for this, that they reached out, that they were chosen for this task force and felt immediately undermined by council moving forward without speaking with us, without letting us find the solutions that we were tasked to find. The purpose of the task force was to look at this as a multifaceted problem and to research what we could do as a city that would solve it, both from the public safety aspect of people feeling uncomfortable with the homeless population, with the, you know, trash on the trails and in the parks, things like that, but also the safety of those who are living in our community unhoused. So even people on the task force who otherwise were for this amendment, moving forward in this fashion is kind of spurning all of that. And frankly, when it comes to the meetings that we've had, first of all, we haven't been given time. This is a multifaceted problem and I heard the comment earlier about we have agencies and these agencies have a lot of money. As somebody who has worked in the nonprofit sector my entire adult life in this community doing social work, those agencies don't have this abundance of money that is nickelled and dimed to the very last penny when we're doing our budgets every single year. So bringing the agencies together, getting them at the table, figuring out how we're going to fund this, because we also understand that the city doesn't have the budget for it either. But looking at how we're going to fund this takes time and takes creativity and takes research that we haven't been given time for. I'm going to be crass for a moment, having worked in this field for a long time, because one of the other things that has been brought up to me is if we do magically come up with funding for a full-time shelter, that it won't be respected, which is what ultimately we're looking at right now. Several agencies are looking at trying to put together a shelter. There's lots of talk about how this ordinance, if it is passed because of the lack of a shelter, would set up the city for lawsuits.
Stephanie, your time is up.
Never mind, I'll talk to y'all later.
Thank you. Folks, and you've got fifteen seconds left, and I'm gonna hold up my hand, that way you guys know where you're at, okay?
My name is Pamela Cobb, I have been a case manager for Salvation Army since two thousand and nineteen. Four years I've been working with the public. October I was made Director of the Salvation Army in Hillsdale. So for four years, I have been working with our public, those at-risk populations, homeless and those that are not. We turned in a letter to oppose the ordinance. I wanna bring up some information, I, I don't wanna read the letter, because anybody who wants it can come to the Salvation Army, I'll make them a copy. But something you may not have taken into effect is there's already been court cases and laws passed regarding this type of ordinance, exactly this type of ordinance. In two thousand and fourteen, Case Martin versus Boise, which previously used to be Bell versus Boise, Idaho, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals affirmed that homeless persons cannot be punished for sleeping outside in the absence of adequate alternatives. They also declared that inhumane and furthermore states that the Constitution prohibits the criminalization of penalties for homeless that set sleep on public properties. In addition to that, in two thousand and fifteen, the U.S. Department of Justice filed a statement of interest brief declaring that it is unconstitutional to punish public people for being homeless. The Eighth Amendment, if nobody is familiar with that, that amendment states that it is excessive bail shall not be required nor excessive fines imposed nor cruel and unusual punishments inflicted. I don't know if you require a social and economic status where you feel that that's only the public that you serve, or if you serve all of the public, because homeless range from newborn to elderly and it's not just the drug addicts that are homeless. These are families out here that are holding jobs, that can't take showers to keep those jobs, that can't wash their clothes. You need to take into consideration, who do you serve? We, as a Salvation Army nonprofit, we serve the public here. We've dealt with all of them. There is no restrictions on coming through and the eighteen hundred meals that we serve monthly to our community that include everybody from the working class to the homeless. But taking this into consideration, I want you to take this into consideration, and again, we ask for a better solution to end homelessness that would lead to a sustainable lifestyle, such as affordable housing and/or year-round shelter. We're asking that you meet with us, meet with all of the resources in Hillsdale County so we can come to a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you, David Moore.
Elizabeth Schlitter, Ward One, also honored to be serving on Stephanie's Homeless Task Force, which she's done an excellent job running. I think, I hope that Tom will address the question of enforceability and legality of this ordinance, but I assume that he's checked all of those court cases and this would not be presented today if it were, in fact, unconstitutional to prevent camping on public land. So I'll let others who are more knowledgeable address that, I think it's an important issue that should be addressed. I do think that we all here are united by concern about homelessness in our community. We're all united by a desire to improve the situation and to help the homeless. We're divided on the question of whether this ordinance, which again prevents camping by anyone, homeless or not, on public land and in public spaces, we're divided on whether or not that is actually a helpful part of an overall more extensive solution. I firmly believe that it is. And although I agree with Stephanie that the communication, timing and coordination between the task force and my own councilmen could have been better in hindsight, I am not personally put out, when I think about it, about this ordinance being proposed quickly and separately from what the task force recommends. I think, in fact, it could be a blessing in disguise because it allows us to address what might be the most contentious part of an overall plan in a way that gives it its fair hearing. And I think preventing large public encampments from growing on city property protects the health and safety of all residents, whether homeless or not. And it protects the appearance and the accessibility of our city's public spaces for all residents. That is the number one reason to, in fact, support it. And as, as the mayor indicated, one of the sticky realities here is that if you vote against this ordinance, you in fact are voting for public encampments. That's a tough spot to be in, but I think it's a recognition of the reality, which is that no one in our community voted for our public spaces to be default homeless housing for people who may or may not need that space at that time. No one voted for that. The default should not be what in fact we make legal by doing nothing. So I think that's important to keep in mind. And to allow it, again, is an admittance of community failure and municipal failure. It's a visible admittance. And I would point out that in this little anecdotal survey I conducted, it's not scientific, it is anecdotal, but it is a snapshot, a hundred and nine people in our community.
Your time's up, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Hello, my name is Brian. I was here when the ordinance was first submitted a month or so ago and during that, it was brought to our attention, there was a statement that was said, why should we make, for help funding anything, the citizens of the city pay for that, of the homeless people? On that, it stated as, you're standing for the citizens. But then in the budget, I just heard a huge amount of money going towards developing and upgrading the private airport. How many of the citizens use that and how would that benefit them and why would they have to pay for that? So when looking at that, who is actually being served and where is the money going if it can't help the homeless? Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Hello, Jose Aravelo, Ward One. I just wanna comment on this legality issue that has been brought forth. In the case Martin v. City of Boise, that's a Ninth Circuit decision. That's the only precedent that we have, but we're not in the Ninth Circuit, we're in the Sixth Circuit here. So the precedent that was set in that case does not apply here. Two thousand and nineteen, Supreme Court refused to review the issue, so there's no national precedent, legal precedent, that would make this unconstitutional. Just on a personal note too, I, I run along the Bobby's Trail regularly and I, just last week, I encountered a homeless man at about seven AM that was sleeping alongside the trail, on one of the benches that's right next to the sewer treatment plant, water fuming plant. So this is an ongoing issue and it's, I've seen, I've run there for years and I've seen people sleeping there for years, so I, I think this is something that does need to be addressed in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you all for serving. My name is George Allen and I live in Ward Four with my wife and three children. I would like to communicate my support for the proposed ordinance forbidding camping on public land. It is the responsibility of the city to keep our public spaces safe, clean and orderly. Our parks are supported by the taxpaying residents of our city and it is your duty as our representatives to see that those spaces are properly maintained. Families and their children should be able to make free and happy use of our parks, trails, woods and beaches without impediment and without fear. I'm asking you to honor your obligation to safeguard the common property and security of your constituents. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Kuiper. I've never done this before, don't know what ward I'm in, but I live on the corner of Sharp Street and Broad Street, right across from the fairgrounds. Been here four years, got three children under the age of eight. We go over to the fairgrounds a lot to play when it's empty during most of the year. We walk down to the library back and forth a lot. And I, we have encountered homeless people before, you know, it's always a little unnerving, but like many councilmembers have said today, never felt threatened or was about to be violently under attack or, or anything approaching, like some of the existential dread that seems to be behind some of, you know, many of my, my good friends are here on the other side of this issue. And I'm baffled, is why I came down, walked down here from my house, thinking, what, what is going on? Has there been many violent attacks that I've been unaware of? Has there been some sort of, I, I used to live in South Bend, yeah, there were gunshots outside my house, but yeah, I've never felt safer than living in Hillsdale, lived in Phoenix, lived in South Bend, I've lived in Minnesota. So the idea that there's a, a colony of what seems to be a language of kind of criminal infestation seems bizarre to me, yeah, sometimes there's beer bottles on my yard and if I saw someone throwing a beer bottle on my yard, I'd go out and accost him probably, but this kind of sweep, it appears to be a sweeping ordinance, again, I have zero expertise on any of that, appears to be a kind of sweeping ordinance that says, almost you're, we can't criminalize you, but we can criminalize the things that you are sort of forced to do and we can sort of criminalize the ways in which you are forced to live. And what, what is the underlying assumption behind that, that this is ultimately a choice, right, and that anyone who chooses to live this way is kind of a malformed person? And maybe that's true, I don't wanna fetishize the homeless either, maybe there's a lot of really terrible choices, I'm sure there are, but what is, because our public responsibility, it seems if there are resources, there do seem to be sub-resources, if there are some ideas, there do seem to be some other ideas. Maybe we should try those ideas out. Maybe we should use our resources along those lines. Instead of repeating this weird sort of early modern nineteenth-century vagrancy law model, which I thought we had sort of put behind us, instead allow, we call them what they are, they're, they're beggars, right, and this has a deep place in our tradition as, as something, again, sinners like the rest of us, but perhaps they should be particularly privileged in the way in which we enact political justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
My name is Ashlyn Moore. I just finished my first year of college with a three-point-two GPA and I am a homeless youth, legally homeless that is. I have been couch surfing since I was fourteen and I left my mom's house due to unsafe circumstances. I have luckily been gifted a loving family that took me in my senior year and has allowed me to stay there to get back on my feet. If they wanted to kick me out, they could and I would have nowhere to go. Without them and the services of Dolce, which is a program I've been in since the age of fourteen, I would not be in college and I would probably be doing drugs and sleeping on Bobby's Trail as well. I am so lucky to have a support system and resources that I found, but others are not as lucky as I am. I also believe that it is demeaning for there to be any percentage of our population living in tents or sleeping on sidewalks and that's why, rather than finding them and charging them with a misdemeanor, we create organizations and safe places for these people to go. If there are no resources or shelters for the homeless to use or live, then what are they expected to do? How are they expected to pay a fine when they can't even afford a house? I personally have slept at parks and I have had issues with the law, but it is because of what I was going through, but I was lucky enough to find people who cared. No one should have to be lucky to have a home, no one should have to be lucky to not sleep on the streets. There has to be more resources or this problem will never be solved. Thank you.
Good evening, Council and distinguished guests. I'm Kathy Shively, I am the coordinator of King's Cover Food Tantrum. Last year, we served twenty-one thousand people came through our doors. Let me put it to you that way, of a town, the county of forty-two thousand, that's a lot of people that we serve. When they come in, we ask them if they have an address. If they don't, then we let them, not homeless, that is not the appropriate term. I say that because I was one of the founders of the Kalamazoo Unhomed Project. The correct term is unhomed and unhoused. When they come through, we provide them with food and we're the first place that they go to, whether it's King's Cover, Salvation Army, my father's table, Al Bethel, wherever they're going, they come to Food Tantrum's. And yet, I've never been asked to join the Homeless Task Force. I serve on the Council of Continuum of Care. I've been doing this for forty years. I'm an ordained pastor. I have yet to see any of you councilmembers show up to King's Cover on a Monday, Wednesday or Friday afternoon to lend your support and help. You're welcome to come, it will not be a photo op, but you're gonna get your hands dirty, you're gonna come face to face with those people that you're supposedly serving and with those people who need the most amount of passion. Thank you.
Dave Morris, Ward. First off, I'm not gonna be told what I call a homeless person. Unhoused, unhomed is changing it to soften, they're homeless, there's no other way around it, if they had a home, they'd be in it. It's also kind of ironic that the full-grown adult males in this room talk about how they've never been accosted by a homeless person. Well, yeah, you're a full-grown adult male, but tell that to my ten-year-old who was flashed out by the school in Custet and ran home scared out of her mind, out of her mind. It's Friday afternoon, it's a beautiful sunny day, we're gonna have some fun. No, that's not what happens. We take the police, I walk through the We take the police, I walk through the crime scene, because it's a crime. We spend Friday afternoon talking about that, and then I gotta go home, because the police asked rightfully, did the man have an erection? So I gotta go home on a Friday and explain to my daughter what an erection is. So I want to hear about they're unhomed, or they're not a threat. They are. There's a broken windows policy, I'm sure you've heard of it. If we let these little things happen, then it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. This ordinance is one step in moving in that direction. It might be a little bit earlier than the task force, and I get that, you want to work hard, you want to be heard, but it's a movement in the right direction, and if it doesn't work from the task force, we could always go back and change it. But right now, we need to pass that, because my daughter should be able to walk home from
Good evening, my name is Smolenska Deschardt. I live at 190 Rio Street, Hillsdale, Michigan, 49242. Honorable mayor and members of city council, I am speaking on behalf of the Hillsdale Impact Team, a local nonprofit composed of dozens of residents dedicated to using compassion-fueled action to advocate for the dignity and respect of all people in Hillsdale, support self-sufficiency, and empower individuals towards stable living. We trust that you have read our statement that has been included in your packet for tonight. It is our goal to work alongside the city council to find a solution-minded approach for our city and its residents, including those experiencing homelessness. Encampments are not a solution to homelessness, and compose health and safety concerns for all. We do agree with that, but we want to see the city council take a step back and begin collaborating with the agencies and organizations who already work within these spaces, who are familiar with the best practices and understand the resources available. Criminalizing homelessness through this ordinance stands to only further create barriers for people to find stable and permanent housing. We implore the city council to not take further action on this ordinance, and instead become part of a proactive approach to disrupt the cycle of homelessness. The city of Hillsdale needs a full-time shelter. Currently, we do not have a way to meet the needs of Hillsdale County families who find themselves without housing, whether they lose the house due to loss of employment, medical emergencies, natural disasters, or a multitude of other circumstances. How can we expect people to navigate confusing systems when their basic need of shelter is not even met? Evidence has shown that the best practices for preventing and reducing homelessness is housing first. A full-time shelter is the first step in a long-lasting solutions. Approving an ordinance that criminalizes camping on private property or public within a community that does not offer any other alternatives has already been deemed to be cruel and unusual punishment, and that is not something we want our city to be a part about, to be about. We urge you to halt further action on this ordinance and explore solutions that will not only benefit those experienced homelessness, but our entire community.
Hello, I'm Angela Turner, I live at 149 Union Street, I'm a member, well, I'm within Ward 1. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I'm in here as a resident who uses our public spaces, including our bikes and our parks and our bike paths, and as a representative of the Hillsdale Impact Team, and I'm also on the city task force. Our team has placed a letter in your packet that we assume you've read, so I'm not going to stand here to reread that to you, but I want to highlight a couple of things of it. We agree with you that encampments on public property are not a solution, especially for those who are experiencing homelessness, but we are asking that you not pass this ordinance to provide time, time for organizations, task forces, and agencies to work with the city council for better solutions for our entire community. The changes we propose, should the city council decide to move forward with this ordinance, will still hold people accountable. We agree that accountability is essential, but adding barriers that only perpetuate the cycle of homelessness does nothing to accomplish any lasting change for those people or for our community. As has been mentioned by Missy, we urge the city council to decriminalize this ordinance, meaning we're asking that the violation be changed from a misdemeanor to civil infraction with fines of not more than $500 or community service in lieu. This would allow a person's employment and their opportunity for permanent housing to not be at risk with the addition of a criminal record. These changes continue to provide accountability while creating a more equitable solution for individuals within our community. We also propose changing the requirement from a verbal or written warning to a verbal and written warning, and that all referrals be provided verbally and in writing within Section 3 of the ordinance. To have a positive impact in regards to homelessness, we need to ensure that those receiving the warnings and referrals are able to comprehend and understand them. Offering these verbally and in writing is a way to meet different levels of comprehension and understanding that will aid in the retention and compliance of it. Having this information delivered both verbally and written is especially important for the referrals, because they are a proactive step towards self-sufficiency and permanent housing. Again, the Hillsdale Impact Team asks that you not pass this ordinance and begin a solution-minded collaboration with organizations and agencies that already work within these spaces. We welcome the opportunity to work with city council and other agencies in finding more equitable solutions that better serve our community while reducing, if not eliminating, the need for encampments. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wilson, I'm aboard here in Hillsdale County. I am currently part of the homeless team. I just want to take a couple minutes and say how I feel, I feel like it's pretty much discrimination. Because A, we're all still living people, we all still have feelings. B, we're no different than people that have nice houses and big cars. Everyone has a past, you shouldn't be able to hold that against them. And nobody's perfect.
And your staff are members of the city council, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Jean Heisey, I'm a resident of the 4th floor. I believe there are two parts to humanitarianism. Solving the problems of homelessness is the second part. The first part, I believe, is that we have a humanitarian approach to citizens of Hillsdale so that they can live safely wherever and travel safely in the city. That group is the group that funds the efforts for restoration of the homelessness. So there's no point in having the first group threatened and fearful if you want them to privately support restorative services. So I strongly support that this ordinance be passed, and therefore, there's restoration, I believe, to both groups.
My name is Michael Jordan, I'm in Ward 2. I would like to speak in favor of the ordinance, though it does seem like it might need some modification, adjustment from misdemeanor to civil infraction or community service in lieu of a final. Those seem to me to be some pretty good ideas. It does seem to me to be imperative that we don't allow public camping, or camping in public spaces. I don't think that that's a workable solution. I live on the corner of Fayette and West Street, and so I was able to watch with some interest the growth of the homeless communities along the bike path and the size of them. But what was even more astonishing was being able to work with some volunteers from the homeless community who cleaned it up. I was able to work with them, and I think that James Galloway and some of the homeless folks here, Liz and others, Chris, they should be commended for doing very good work. Over 120 large contractor-sized bags of stuff carried away to the dump, because it was left there when the winter came. And this group of volunteers has not only cleaned up the bike path, but in the community as well, around the courthouse, the post office, businesses. And I want to commend that volunteer effort of working to solve a problem.
Council, tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of public order and civil decency. My name is Josiah Lippincott, I'm a member of Ward 4, and I am also on the Hillsdale City Homelessness Task Force. Tonight, we've had several individuals say that they have never felt afraid in Hillsdale, and I can say that I have. We have had individuals passing by my home who have been obviously intoxicated or high, who have been screaming slurs, who have been screaming words that could not be repeated here, and these threats obviously bother my wife and my newborn daughter. We've also had a homeless person who passed by my home who had a pit bull who was off the chain who chased my wife. We've almost had tragedy in Hillsdale due to our homelessness problem. My neighbor had an individual who was clearly under the influence of a substance who came inside of his home. She's very lucky that she did not get shot in that instance. There have been other occurrences like this throughout the town, and I think we are playing with fire. If we do not establish public order on public and private property, we are risking serious tragedy in this town. We are risking civilizational decline. We have to have public order. Every year, the city asks that I pay property taxes, and I do so, but in return, I expect that my right to public services be maintained. I expect that the right of all Hillsdale citizens to have safe and orderly public communities be maintained. Tonight's measure, tonight's ordinance, is a step toward accomplishing that end. We need to make clear, it is not acceptable to use public property for private ends. That's not what it's for. I understand there are individuals who need help, whether through their own choices or through circumstance. I recommend that any sort of aid given to the homeless come with a requirement to provide pro-social activities in defense of the community. Many of these individuals need structure and order in their lives. It is not noble, it is not Christian, it is not humanitarian to enable bad behavior. It is not good to do this. I have seen, over the last decade, as I have lived in Hillsdale, as we have seen this problem explode. And in the same time period, we have seen more and more individuals and organizations and money from state, local, and federal nonprofits dedicated to solving the problem, and it has not worked. It has not worked. The problem has grown worse. This is not compassion, this is a problem. And what I'm saying tonight is that we need to take a tough-love approach to this problem in our city, and it starts tonight by you passing this ordinance. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Hello, Seriak's, Ward 4. I do not know how I feel about the ordinance one way or the other. I have a public lot that comes right up to the back fence of my house. I have seen both sides. I have regularly run the trail, sometimes I'm afraid, sometimes I'm not. Maybe the mood is me and not the people that I'm coming across. They've almost always been cordial, there've been times where my children were followed. One time, it was not good, and I got there and I reported the man to the police. Another time, they were being followed, and it turned out that it was their friend's grandfather who was looking out for them. On that back lot, up behind my fence, someone at 1:00 AM thought it was funny to bang on my fence and scare my chickens. And calling the police, nothing could be done about it, because there's no ordinance. But at the same time, I'm not sure that I'm saying there should be an ordinance, I'm saying that I don't know what the right answer is. And sometimes when we don't know for sure, when we're torn one way and the other, like we want to be compassionate, but we also want to, sometimes we have to pull tough love. When somebody just continues to do the same thing over and over again, you have to, there has to come a line where you say, no more. But when we don't know what the right answer is, then it's okay to take a step back and take more time to think about it. It's okay to pause and say, we're not taking the vote tonight, we're waiting, we're going to get more information, we're going to get some more research done, we're going to get some more input from how has this worked for other places? Should it be criminal, should it not be criminal? Should it be misdemeanor or not misdemeanor? It's okay to take more time, and that's really what I want to say, is since there's so many people in the room and in this community that aren't sure what the right answer is and what the right ways to go about it, it's okay to take more time to think about it.
Hi, I'm Ginger Novak, I live in Ward 4. When my son was little, he always needed money, and his father and I always said, great, let's see some work. And you want a lot of money? Work harder. And if you want to achieve, as he now has, a position in the community where you have enough over your needs to help those less fortunate than you, you better never break those two rules. I have so much sympathy for those who are in dire straits. I have been in dire straits before and was helped by the charity of others. I'm no stranger to that. However, when the so-called homeless are using cell phones, they're able to buy recreational drugs or alcohol, when you're broke, those are things you can't buy, because they're not essential. So I think we need to draw a line about what we're calling homeless, and I appreciate this ordinance. I think, like Mr. Lippincott, it is just the first step, because we have to hold these people accountable and develop their character. Now, I want to live on one of these streets, and God help you if you do, South Street, Sharp Street, Frisbee, I don't know how you come and go from your houses without exploding, because the streets are in such terrible shape. Maybe we could combine giving these people work to do. They could develop some character, they could develop some pride in something they did, instead of laying around trying to get us to let them camp in the public park. I think there are other things we can do, I don't have a problem with this ordinance, but I think we should include some work in the treatment of the problem. And thank you so much, all of you, for listening. Good night.
Thank you, Ginger.
Good evening. My name is Cornell Sample, and I do not live out here, but I have the privilege of driving an hour to and from work every day to work out here with the homeless population that we have. That's my honor. Integrity does not equal choosing who you want to help. How can you say that you do not want to criminalize the homeless population, yet the result will result in a criminal record? If you can afford to pay the cost to be in jail, then you would, of course, pay the cost to have a home. When did public property become more valuable to the human existence of life? How many people in this room have had to swallow their pride and ask for help, ask for forgiveness? If you are not one of those people, you are very slim. I've heard about trash being in the park, I've heard about trash being on the trail. I've only heard it one time. Congratulations and respect to the people who walk this trail and pick up the trash. By stating that the Hillsdale population should allow homeless individuals to sleep in their homes creates fear that was done intentionally. At what point does this become a housing-first approach if we don't penalize because people do not have homes? Maslow's hierarchy of needs explains how one cannot obtain success at a higher level in life without the basic needs of the first level being met. How many people took a shower this morning in their home, slept in their bed? I understand that work harder, you'll be able to provide for your family. That's not always the case. That's not always the case. Just because someone is homeless, it doesn't mean that they are bad, and it doesn't mean that they do bad things. A bad person did those bad things. Not a generalization of the homeless people. Defense mindset and patterns are ways that people survive. Prime example, how many times have you lied to get what you want? That's your defense mechanism. People who do not have homes also have defense mechanisms on how to survive day to day. People who have cell phones, I get those cell phones. Assurance wireless for free, government program that they do not pay for. But when I call them for housing, how am I supposed to get ahold of them if they do not have a phone? That's part of housing first. We address the basic needs of human life. We treat everyone like an individual. I could not, as a man of God, sit back there and not say anything. And I know I stick out the sore thumb. I hope that I see everyone out here, and if you ever have a question, I promise you, speak to a homeless person, and they know how to get ahold of me. Thank you, and have a blessed night.
My name's Jimmy Herman. I'm one of the unhoused people. I have a cell phone. Again, just like Cornell said, I have it through assurance wireless. It's completely free. I'm trying to find housing. I've applied for Community Action Agency help. A lot of the properties in the city do not work with Community Action Agency. And that's a problem because if... Right now, I have no job, even though I have applied for many. I've gotten interviews at several. I can't take a regular shower, so obviously, I go in there, I try to, you know, deodorant up and body spray as best as I can to try and cover up my, you know, obviously, I stink because I can't shower every day. So I go in there, obviously smelling either terrible or like I just bathed in perfume. And so I have not had a job. So I can't afford to pay for housing without Community Action's help. But every place I've gone to has been hiring. They still have jobs open. But apparently, I'm unhireable because I'm homeless, which makes it incredibly hard to become not homeless. So, thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Last time I spoke here was November 7th of last year. I was homeless at the time. I'm not anymore. I'm here to tell you that... I'm here to tell you that investing in the homeless, since we are a capitalist country, when we make investments, you as city council members, you make investments, you use weights and measures to judge what's a good investment and will it bring returns. Well, I'm here to tell you that I went from sleeping in a homeless shelter, my wife and I, to now having a beautiful home and reading and paying taxes. Mayor himself attested that I saw you Saturday, said hello to you, Mr. Mayor, in Walmart. So I'm here to tell you that it does work. Robert Soha, thank you so much. You actually came out of your own pocket when I was homeless, and you paid me and a couple of other guys to do some work in the city at your home. And I took some of that money, and I used it to put gas in the rented car to get to Tennessee to get trained for a trucking job, and now I have that. So, you know the scripture that says, "Don't say, 'Hey, I'm sorry you're hungry. I'm sorry you're homeless. Be filled, be warm, have a good day.'" No, that's not what you do. You don't say, "Just be filled and peace to you." Come out of your pocket, give of your time, give of your wisdom, and help people to get out of that situation. So, I'm proof, my wife is proof, my daughter is proof that your work and your help isn't in vain. And now the goal is to start my own trucking company and to... Out of Hillsdale County, and to put people to work driving my trucks and putting money into Hillsdale coffers. So it's a trickle effect. So just know that people that are homeless, they don't want to be there. They don't want to be camping at the park. They'd much rather be in the house. I love my home. I love wriggling my toes in my carpet, you know. I love watching my daughter play in the yard. So I would hope that you would take a stance as to thinking, how can we put these people who really need it into a situation to where they can fend for themselves and pay it forward? My wife and I, now we volunteer and share the work because we want to pay for it, and we want to help, we want to duplicate our success. And I just really hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you, guys.
Hello, I'm Joseph Colton. I had a long speech, but I shortened it down to three minutes. So I'm gonna try my best here. I understand that we want our parks to feel safe for us and for our children. I understand that we don't want to see garbage on the ground and hairfinea that can be harmful to us or others. I understand that our parks are the place for some of us to spend family time and for others to reflect on life. The city ordinance is sending a message to the people that live there, even if it's not the message that you're trying to send. This message is saying that you are not wanted and that you do not matter, that the situations in your life and the struggles that you face day to day doesn't matter. And the reason that I can stand here and talk about how this ordinance feels like on the other side is because I was on the other side. I was homeless, and worse off, I was an addict for 18 years. And for 18 years, I struggled with my addiction, wanting to change, and hearing from people that you just have to have the will to change. This statement was far from the truth. We all have these statements claiming to be the answers when they're only one piece of a big puzzle. Most homeless or even addicts all have the same thing in common, which is a lack of support, a lack of family, wanting them to just understand us. But because they're told that tough love isn't the answer, is the answer, they suffer from the consequences that drive them deeper into their addiction and to their problems. I stayed here before today pleading my case because I'm tired of seeing people suffer. I'm tired of people making remarks that the people that are out there camping are bad people. You see, we get an image of one person maybe acting up or dangerous, and we assume that they're always right. These people that I lived with and these people I ate food with, and I come to know them, they're thoughtful people, full of potential. They care around me to start to tell a story about what led them to where they are. They are, according to God, equal, and being equal, they deserve the same opportunities as anybody else in this room. See, one thing that I've learned is none of us were taught that live life the right way will bring you such joyfulness. This young man I know started becoming the very things that people proclaim that he is. Years of counseling, imprisonment, and rehab, this young man was never able to figure out the secret that he felt people had to live a joyful life. He wasn't mad that the people had homes, and people had cars, and family that they loved. He wasn't mad that they had these things, but he was empty because he didn't know how to get the things that they had. This man today is a very proud and joyful, godly person. He goes out of his way to help anybody. He works two jobs, and he's finally figured out the secret that he thought people were holding and not telling. I know this man personally because this man is I. You see, this ordinance is a short-term effect to a long-term problem. If the answer that you seek is for a long-term effect, then look no more than to yourself. Because the Bible says that your tongue has the power of life and death, and it is the words that you speak that can change the world. For the Bible says gracious words are healing to the bones. And numerous studies have shown and proven that kind words have better, more long-lasting results than words of negative punishment. We have a chance in our community to take a stand and come together for the better. And I am here today, a born-again man, not only because of God, but because of the people that stood up for me. It was people that believed in me and had the patience for me to change my life. For a man that had the second-most arrests in Hillsdale County, ended up in jail my whole life, and in such a short time, the results can't be ignored. So I ask you, will you stand with me and make this community great? Will you stand with me for the right things?
Joseph, your time is up, sir.
All right, thank you.
I know we're hearing some passionate speeches, and I know that we want to encourage people. We really don't need to applause after every single speech. So we don't normally do that in town speeches. So...
So now I don't get any applause?
No.
My name's Cody Stracker, Ward Three. I think that... First, I'd say thank you for all of you attending to what I do think is a crisis. But I think we need to ask, what are our aims in this task? Is it safety? Yes. As a father of four young children, I want them to be safe. I want them to be able to travel around the city. Is it lawfulness and order? Yes. But it is also a concern for the people who are without homes, homeless. My concern with this ordinance is that it will, in fact, put people in a worse situation than if they have a different answer to this problem. Making homelessness specifically a misdemeanor, making it a crime in camping, accompanied by a monetary fine, will be a twofold blow against them. A vote against this ordinance is not a vote for disorder simply or for danger simply. There are more options. Please consider something else that accomplishes safety and order as well as working, as I think you all desire, for those who are homeless, not to remain homeless, but to become full members and contributors to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
I know what you do, hope it's sweet, but here we go. So I'm Bethany Harn. I'm the personal development director at St. Louis Drift. I work with all the 17 homeless people that live behind the Thresh door. I love them. They are just in need of help and support. And I don't really believe that this ordinance is a good idea. I think it's discriminating. And for everyone to put groups, we're all one group because we're all human beings. So I am going to say no on this. Thanks.
Judge Jansen, Ward One. I agree. We do need anti-camping ordinance, but this is not the time. We talked about, you know, we don't want to spend any money on the homeless. Yet, the city attorney said if we cite somebody, he's gonna have to show up in court. It's gonna cost us money. Question, have you heard about beer bottles and cans and loud noises? I live on Hillsdale Street. I hear those. I see bottles and cans in my yard, and somehow, they naturally, all that loud noises and screaming, all disappears when college kids go home. Must be just anecdotal. Ms. Leader, there's two doors down, and a few years back, we had two animal house living between us. They were suspended several times for drunkenness and everything else. Those weren't homeless people. Those were college kids. Heard the narrative of fear and all that. It's unfortunate Mr. Mars' child experienced what you did. Talking to the chief, I asked him, "Was it a homeless person?" Because we won't know until that person's arrested. We want to create this narrative to fear them, which is not true. But let's look at the legal issues involved here. Yes, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals doesn't cover Hillsdale. It doesn't cover Eastern Michigan. But Phillips versus Cincinnati, 2021, they talked about state-created endangerment. Involved camping. The people who were safe, camping in a safe area, they were ordered to leave. They were put in danger of going to an unsafe place. That happens, does the city want to get sued for that? In fact, that court, which is in Sixth District, Circuit, lamented that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals has not yet to rule as sane as Ninth Circuit. They're just waiting for a case to happen. Is that what we're going to do here? Pass this ordinance and have a case? The other issue involved, talked to a lot of police officers, is qualified immunity. Qualified immunity is the police cannot get sued for doing their job. They can get sued personally if they violate the civil rights of somebody. If they take one of the homeless, kick them out, and then it's ruled unconstitutional, they can get sued. And whoever orders them to do it, will get sued. Is the city manager going to risk his livelihood, all his possessions? Is the chief of police going to do it? Look at the ramifications. The successful way of doing it is one housing, two programs, and then three enforcement. Let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Laura Ray, Ward Four. I first want to clarify that although I work for a court, I am presenting just my own personal opinion as a private citizen and not speaking on behalf of the court. I do think this ordinance is important from a public health and safety standpoint. In terms of the concerns that have been expressed about enforceability, I would point out that without an ordinance like this, the police are not even in a position in which they can issue a warning because it's not illegal for somebody to be parked in, to be camped in public property. I would also add that there are cities elsewhere in the country where there are large homeless encampments. My husband and I, about 15 years ago, 20 years ago, were in Portland, Oregon, and it was terrifying. So we don't want a situation to develop in which what seems like a small health and safety issue becomes a large health and safety issue. I would, however, like to emphasize that we, as a community, need to ask ourselves what we can do for those of our fellow citizens who are without homes. That's something that we're all called to attend to. Public camping is not a solution, but we need to put our heads together and see what is. I look forward to the work of the Homelessness Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Good evening. The decision to pass this ordinance has already been made long before tonight. Nothing we say is going to change any of your minds, but I cannot sit by without saying anything. I have been told I have a bleeding heart, and my intelligence has been questioned by semi-council. A blogger who appears to be so embarrassed by what they write that they must go by an anonymous name has called us distraught lifestyle advocates. I'll tell you what I am. I'm a master's in social work graduate, grad student, I'm sorry. Professionally, I work with those that are housing insecure. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, and I'm a grandmother, and I am a property owner in the city limits, and my backyard faces the walking path. I have never feared for my safety being in my backyard or being on the trail. I went down the trail at night or the daytime. This is not Mayberry. There is crimes. This ordinance is not going to prevent them crimes. And I am very sorry to the gentleman whose child was assaulted. As somebody who works for sexual assault victims, my heart goes out to you, but it's also a parenting issue. You cannot let your children be alone on the trail or walk in the woods alone. I would never do that at that age.
She was walking home from school.
So just be a parent and quit putting it on other people. You want the police to now be social workers, but you don't want to give them a cost of living? How fair is that? Shouldn't the police be doing their jobs and trying to shut down the seven active drug houses that are within the city limits? Listen to the helpers who have stood up here and talked about their experiences of helping those. And quit listening to those who are up here screaming about the boogeyman. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Good evening, Council. Jerry Brown, Lock Road, out in North Adams Township. Been volunteering, working with some of the homeless people here in Hillsdale. Some of the... Heard some of their stories about how they got here, whether it was a divorce or they lost their job, or they had an illness and couldn't pay the rent. And I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about this is the... This ordinance is the first point. This is the first point. This is the first step to get things correct. Well, what is the second point? What is the second point that the city's gonna do? Are you just going to fine them $500? Are you gonna put them in jail? And when they get out of jail, at midnight? they're gonna go back and find another place to hide out? Do we have a plan? A set, a step two? That's I think why we're asking for the ordinance to be postponed a bit and tell us some more ideas to come in on some permanent help for folks that are in serious serious problems with their life right now that a lot of these people have ideas on how things can be made better for them and give them a chance. We've seen some successes here tonight. There's a lot of them out there, people that are just hoping for a chance to have some successes with your help. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
James Thomas, the third senior. I'm actually a Hillsdale Township resident, but I am your direct neighbor. John, James C. Wilson has a law enforcement theory about broken windows. The more you see them, the more you're gonna see them, the more you don't fix them, the more they're gonna show up. When my son started this year at Davis, walking him to school, just walked him to school. As the year ends, I'm now walking him to school with my nineteen eleven. I come from the Detroit area. I know what I see with my own eyes. I happen to be retired, so I spend a lot of time at home. I know what I see on my street. I don't know if what you're doing is right. I'm not smart enough. I don't know these things. But there is broken windows and something needs to be done about them. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Eckert. I live on Fayette Street. I'm an ordained minister. I'm the president, founder of One Step Ministries. In two thousand and four, I tried to open up a homeless shelter. I went up with friends and other people that were supporting us. We went to Grand Rapids. We met with people up there of the board of directors who was willing to help us. They'd been open for a hundred and one years, so they really knew what they were doing. They were highly successful in helping the homeless. Unfortunately, there was an organization here in Hillsdale that was out to shut me down about the homeless. And they accomplished that. So we did soup suppers for fifteen years and, and many other things for the homeless. I'm an ordained minister. There is, this morning, I woke up to a story from a minister about Vancouver. I was there. I saw the homeless in Vancouver. Boxes on the street. Well, they were able to get every one of them, about four hundred. They got them housing. They helped them. Now, I think we're smart enough with our twenty compared to four hundred in Vancouver and other places are successful. They are human beings. Now, I just want to tell you two scriptures. And there's many, there's more than twenty-nine scriptures in the Bible about helping the poor. One is Proverbs fourteen thirty-one, whoever oppresses a poor man insults his maker. But he who is generous to the needy honors him. And then Proverbs nineteen seventeen, whoever is generous to the poor lends to the Lord, and he will repay. So if anybody has given to others, God is watching. He sees everything. We can handle this problem. I would be willing again to open up a homeless shelter and go up to my friends who have done it for a hundred and one years, because the poor will always be with us. All right. You know, I appreciate everything everyone is doing here. I appreciate everything that's been said. And, you know, I do want to say something that was on my heart that all the shooters in our schools across the nation, none of them were homeless.
Thank you, Cindy. Your time's up.
I'm Katie Kesspar, Ward three. This is a really complex issue, as you can see from all the comments. I truly believe, and I think most people here also believe, that all humans are endowed and created with dignity and are deserving of love and respect from their fellow man. And that's why this issue is so complex, because we're talking about humans. I truly believe that with the array, the diversity of people in this room and the task force that you've put in place, that the issue that we have that we're addressing today of the homeless can be addressed in really good ways and that when all of us pump together to help our fellow man, beautiful things will happen. However, I urge you today to accept, to approve this ordinance for this reason. The underlying issue of this ordinance, which I'd like to point out, is whether public land is for the purpose of habitation. And if it is, then what ought to be the limits on that? Or is public land not for the purpose of ordination, sorry, for the purpose of habitation? In which case you should accept the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Doug Swain, Scott, Ward one. A lot of good things were said tonight. And one of the things that I'm gonna, I'm just asking, don't make a decision tonight on this. Take it back. Listen to your constituents that were out here, that were telling you what their thoughts were, what they were thinking. Go back and look it over. Because these are human beings. These aren't animals. They don't, you know, they're not out there to do, do harm, even though even in, we even have the rich and, and different ones that does harm to us, and they don't even think about it. Look at the improper taxes and everything that we, they put on us. You know, but we don't take you and throw you out because somebody made different things that were wrong. The thing is, the people here, as Matthew twenty-five forty through forty-five says, you know, when you've turned and done it unto the least of these, you've done it unto me. And they asked, Jesus said, well, when did we see you hungry and poor and destituted and, and all this? He says, when you've done it to the least, you've done it unto me. And it's time that we as people of Hillsdale, we're a small community. We're not Los Angeles. We're not New York. We're not all these other places. We know each other here almost. And it's time that we come together as a group realizing what needs to be done. And one of the biggest things we need to do, when you go back and you look this over, pray. That's all I'm asking you. When you, before you make a decision, before you even start your meeting, pray. Ask the Lord for guidance on what you're gonna do, what you're gonna say, and, and these are the things that I ask for from you. Thank you.
Hello, CJ Tomrey. I, I wonder what the job of the city council is. And the reason I say that is because it seems to me that the churches and the organizations that their job is to take on, just like the thrift store, which I think is amazing what they've done over there. They saw a problem and they started to solve it. And they've gotten a lot of support and people dropping off stuff. Isn't that what we're called to do? The city council's job is to oversee the city and protect its citizens. And so my suggestion, whether you hesitate, look back, how you would charge people, I think this ordinance needs to be implemented because we have to start somewhere. This problem, my building was broken into and right in downtown, had things stolen out of the garage. One of which was a weapon. Thank goodness they got they were able to find it, which was locked up in the building. So my concern is, you know, what do we pick first? Helping the homeless? Safety? I think safety, it has to be the first thing, because how can you help people if they're not even safe? If we had more people like the thrift store that are willing to take on this problem, and if we had everybody in this room willing to participate in helping the people, then maybe we would accomplish something. But in my opinion, the city council's job is to keep the city safe. That's your job. So I think the ordinance needs to be started. And so that we can then solve the problem of helping. I think some of the what James and some of the other people have done around town, I've seen them around town, they're doing an amazing job. And I would have to think from a perspective of being, feeling like they've accomplished something, because it's looking really nice. They're doing a great job. So I don't know who asked them to do it. I don't know if anyone's encouraging them or supporting them or financially, it doesn't matter. It looks great. And the gentleman who got out of the homeless, I mean, amen. And somebody helped him. But that doesn't have anything to do with the issue of those residents in town, whether they're taxpayers or not, that the safety isn't there. We have to start somewhere. So I would suggest either passing this ordinance, even if you decide to make some adjustments to it. Thank you.
Hello, members of council. My name is Jimin Springer. I live in Ward four, and I ask that you approve this ordinance. First, I want to say thank you to the homeless task force and to the people in the room that work with the homeless. The reality, I think, that is a little bit, is one of the complex issues is that you can't really force people into treatment or into housing. I myself have personal experience with homelessness. I have three uncles that were throughout their lives, often on in housing or, or not housed and because of their struggles with alcoholism. And the problem is, is that there was nothing my family could do really to make sure they were safely housed. And personally, having really loved my uncles, I would not want to meet them on Bobby's Trail by myself while they were drinking. And so I think that's really important to think about in terms of safety. We just were at Saks Park on Mother's Day. There, I would say, were six to eight people who were in the pavilion when we got there. So like, our family couldn't go in the pavilion. They obviously had a lot of personal belongings. They had, I think they'd been staying there for the night. I mean, it is, I'm conflicted, obviously, actually having family members who are homeless and feeling compassionate. It is a conflict in my heart. But I definitely noticed a big difference between the time they moved here and now. I don't, I think that this is a difference in Hillsdale taking care of a few of its own who are unhoused at, at any given time or a large once of the homeless people moving in from other communities. I've lived in Detroit, in Georgia, in California, in Ann Arbor. I was part of Ann Arbor, I was part of the Ann Arbor church group that housed warming shelters. I was there when Ann Arbor built their homeless shelter. The homeless population grew exponentially in Ann Arbor after a homeless shelter was built. It was different from when we were working with them just in our churches. And so I fear for that in Hillsdale because I see a difference between when I first moved here and now. I run, hide by myself. I personally used to run on Bobby's Trail and at Saks Park. I do not do that anymore. And I will not give our public spaces over. That makes me just incense that I feel unsafe in those places. And so, you know, can I relegate my running to public streets that are well-lit? Yes, and I do that. But do I want to be able to enjoy Saks Park with my kids by myself? Yes. Would I go there like we did on Sunday without my husband and my son? No, I wouldn't. It, I just, I've lived in Detroit and Ann Arbor, and I'm, I'm too wise for that. I know from my thrivers, my uncles, again, good people on drugs and alcohol do dangerous things. Really important to remember that. Not bad people, but good people with addiction do dangerous things.
Hello, my name is John Brooks, and I'm a taxpaying, taxpayer living at Ward four. We've lived here for about ten years, and the number of homeless that we've seen in the community has increased. The immigrant lawyer in public places are taking illegal drugs, drug use, the waste of which constitutes serious public health concerns. Increasingly, it's becoming more difficult to feel comfortable spending time with my family in these public places, sometimes even in downtown. I can second what Jimin had said. I saw her in the park on, on Mother's Day and felt similarly. I understand that some think current ordinances, nonprofit activity in the city are enough to correct the problem. I do not believe that they are, and I believe that the evidence of their inability is the fact that they have failed thus far to prevent the rapid increase in homelessness in the community. These are people who need help, and it's apparent to me that they're not getting it. That can be considered later. This is a very immediate public health issue. Stepping back to wait or think will allow that issue to continue. The task force can still do its work to solve the other issues related to homelessness, but something needs to be done now. And I believe that this proposed ordinance is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is James Willock. I live in Cambridge Township. I'm a volunteer at Loving the Name of Christ. I've attended meetings with the Hillsdale Impact Team. I was a state trooper for twenty-nine years, many of those in the service of people in this community. Heard mayors, heard the mayor say he doesn't even know if this is necessarily enforceable. Heard the city attorneys say that the likelihood of somebody going to jail for this is not real likely for a first offense, more like a third. I've heard talk of crimes being committed in this city. And forgive me, but I haven't heard any of these crimes, as mentioned, from drug abuse to innocent exposure to threats that were because somebody put a tent on public property. I think all these are being attributed to the homeless population here in Hillsdale. But the only one, quite frankly, that can speak of the crimes being committed by homeless people is the police chief, because he would be the one that actually has those numbers. Councilman Wolfman, or Wolf Ram, instead of knowing him for fifteen years, I think I can say that right. He said that we should amend this to a civil infraction. The lead city attorney said that in code enforcement, actually, there's more compliance with a fine associated. People that value the homeless population, something needs done. The homeless task force has met. They weren't quite given a chance to come up with a solution that better serves this community. This ordinance, I don't see it as being something that's gonna solve the problem. The underlying problem is people need housing. People need help. The sign on the coming into town says Hillsdale is the people. I guess show them that it's actually more than just words on a sign.
Thank you, James.
Hi, my name is Josie Ecker. I'm a resident of Hillsdale. First of all, thank you all for everything that you guys do. We do appreciate you and all the work that you put into our community. I would like to just say a couple of things. One, there's a lot of accusations about crimes being committed. People making other people uncomfortable when they see them, but there is no proof that those people are homeless. People making noise in the middle of the night. There is no proof that that was a homeless person. We are stereotyping them and we are making them all pay for crimes they did not commit. Also, I would like to say that if you say that you don't want to criminalize being homeless, that is what in fact is happening. We're sitting here talking about whether or not it's gonna be a misdemeanor or a civil issue. That's speaking of crime, if it's a misdemeanor. That goes on That goes on their permanent record. They're already having such a hard time finding housing, finding work. This is going to deter them even more from being able to do those things. I don't have a problem with trying to find solutions that keeps people from having to camp on public property. I want our community to feel safe, but I also want the homeless to feel safe. And I do believe that a lot of our issues that we're dealing with isn't issues with homeless, but issues with meth. And that meth, all the homeless that I know do not use meth. They are not on drugs, they don't even, they don't even drink alcohol. But there's so much meth in this community, it is a plague. And I see people getting arrested for it, and then just released. I don't understand. 15 years ago, the consequences of marijuana was off the charts. But people are getting caught with meth and being allowed to walk. I don't understand. And that's the real issue here, is that we have meth in this community that needs to stop. And you think that by stopping the homeless, you're stopping the meth, and that is not what's going to happen. You're going to be hurting innocent people that really just need help. And the meth dealers are still going to be there. We've got to battle the true villain here, which is drugs. That's our issue when we find needles. When you find the beer bottles and the needles, was there any proof that those were homeless people that left them there? Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you taking a moment to have compassion for these individuals that came here tonight. It was brave of them to come here. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Josie.
Hi, my name is Chrisanto Escalosanto. I'm working on my 13th year of being cocaine-free and alcohol. Okay? I'm homeless, and I'm tired of being treated like a second-class citizen. Okay? You pass that down, ordinance? I ain't moving. I'm not. I don't know if I'm a city property or not. I'm not moving my tent. That's my home. You're violating my civil rights. I have a right to be there. I don't care who owns the damn property. I'm not doing nothing wrong. I don't, I don't do drugs. I help people on drugs. I just treat people here, I help. Get off drugs. Because I can do it. If I can do it, they can do it. Anybody can do it. Okay? And please stop treating us like we're just one of them. Such, such, we're so bad, lining us up and shoot us. Shoot us all. Hey, you solved the problem, but the drugs are still going to be here, son. Think about that. You're human beings. Okay? And also, let me remind you, Jesus was homeless too. If Jesus was among us, would you, would you do that to him? Think about that. Shame on you all. Shame on you. And I walk the trail all the time, but people stop behind. If I see something wrong, I'll fix it. Okay? I'm here for, I love, this is my community. I love everybody in this community. Everyone. Even you all. Why? I don't know. Because I have to. I have to. Look, we're human beings, okay? Help us. Don't shame us. Help us. Give us a little piece of land so we can be there. We can place ourselves. Matter of fact, a lot of people respect me. Okay? A lot of people. And I appreciate that. I earned that. That's what I do, I help people. All people. Not just the homeless. But I do, you know, and by the way, I'm not moving. Shoot me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm not a second-class citizen. I mean, we're being, we all are. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Any more public comment?
We have so many over here.
I just have a rhetorical question. We've heard a lot about compassion. What's the appropriate level of compassion for the children that have to die of needles? I think that there can be many ways to pursue compassion. We've heard about the great efforts of Mr. Galloway. We've heard about what's going on behind the thrift. But what's the appropriate level of compassion for the people whose safety is threatened? We can stick our heads in the sand and deny that that's the case, but we all know that it is. And I don't, I'm not smart enough to be for or against housing first, or any particular social policy. But I will say that the political attitude, the children have to be escorted now, when they didn't used to have to be, because of boutique social pursuits, is not going to fly in this community.
Thank you. My name is Russell. I live in Ward 4. Government exists to create order, and as the mayor alluded to earlier, not passing this ordinance means that you tacitly accept disorder in this community. You accept continued public indecency and sexual assault. You accept continued public drug use and abuse. You accept continued alcohol abuse and use. A choice to punt on this issue is a choice. You have an opportunity to act to solve this issue before you now. Name one city in this country that has solved the issue of homelessness by lowering standards of public order. There's a reason why New York City, San Francisco, downtown Detroit are dirty, and unsafe, and declining. Their public servants also have an opportunity to act, like you do tonight. History proves time and time again that ignoring the problem is not an effective way to solve it. These people do need help. And as the scriptures say over and over again, "The poor and needy are near and dear to our Lord's heart." And we should help them. But not by allowing disorder to reign in this community. That's not the way. Like it or not, you have a hard choice on your hands. I pity you. You have half this room that wants you to vote one way, and half that wants you to vote on the other. And you're going to make people upset, no matter what you do. But consider this. What happens if something worse happens in our community? What happens if Councilman Sharp doesn't have to travel to New York City to feel threatened? If your inaction causes severe damage to law-abiding citizens in this community, your inaction in support of continual disorder will be remembered. So I urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Please, be my guest.
Thanks, Juan Ward 4. First, this seems, this is an ordinance that isn't going to correct the problem. So it's the definition of big government. I'm a Republican, and I'm against big government. If I thought it was going to solve the problem, sure, go for it. I lived in Seattle back in the 80s. Seattle had a huge homeless problem. They did ordinance after ordinance after ordinance. And it's still growing. You can't legislate good behavior. We hear about drugs and beer bottles, and I lived up by the college, right across from College Baptist Church. Some weekends were hell up there. Sorry, Adam, you didn't want to swear, but they were horrible. Loud all night long, beer cans in your yard. Those were homeless? Those were college kids. We don't know that the homeless are causing all of these problems. I feel bad for your daughter. Horribly bad. That's a disgusting thing. That's a criminal. All the homeless are not criminals. You're targeting a group of people because of so bad people. It just, it makes no sense. And it's not going to solve the problem. The legal system here slaps people on the hand and sends them out. When I was growing up, when my parents told me something, if I didn't do it, follow the laws, I had repercussions. The legal system here, we have no repercussions. They get a slap on the hand and sent back out. Why, that's why we have a drug problem and issue here. If people actually got some hard time, they'd go in, get cleaned up, and they'd either keep doing it, or they'd end up in prison for a long time. We need a legal system that's going to punish illegal activity. And we'll get back to the Bible. Proverbs 22:9. "The generous will themselves be blessed, for they share the food with poor." You can look up homeless, what does the Bible say about homeless, and see all sorts of scripture saying you help these people, you don't punish these people. Thank you.
Ladies first.
Hi, my name is Angie Kratzar, and I've worked with the homeless for the last 12 years in a variety of different organizations. The first question I have is, there's currently nine locations that they are residing. So the question would be, if there's going to be a variety of different rural officers, agencies that are going to go through all of those locations nightly, just to see that they're no longer there, and how that's going to be taken care of. Those people don't have the means to know how this turned out tonight. Unless they have the phones that they're using to try and find jobs, they're all not going to get that notification that this has went through or not went through. So with those nine locations where people are residing that are looking for something better, I think there is something better. There's multiple cities that are having different programs that help solve this problem of having safety, yet having places for the homeless to go. Larger cities, for instance, San Diego has 1,958 homeless, and have programs where they're all in areas, but not throughout the community. That helps them have a place to go, resources can come to them, and yet not be in different ways that feel unsafe to the rest of the community. I think that if we give this some time and work with the task force, we can find solutions that are going to help, after hearing from so many people that this will impact on both sides. So I'm hoping that you can just take some time and go over some of the information that was given, and work additionally with the task force with the information that they have, and we can find something that's going to help everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you all for, I suppose, your patience tonight and entertaining all of our comments. Good stuff has been remarked, so I'm going to steer clear of all such good stuff and just try to offer a comment that is so dry that I don't get an applause. I've had a lot of positive recognition from the community for cleanup works. I was able to enlist the help of a number of the homeless to apprehend a lot of trash in the areas that they were camping in one time. I think part of the reason this ordinance has come about is because the city did not have the legal means to confiscate the property that was littering to public places. And that's a big chunk of what this ordinance is. There was, there was questions on whether or not the city could come under fire for removing folks' private property from the campsites. That's, that's pretty much how I got involved. I'm homeless currently. I was staying at the warming center in the wintertime when Will Morrissey spoke concerns with a constituent about the trash along the trail. So I went out looking, and I, myself, found it to be an eyesore. I was born here, this is my, my city too. I grew up in reading. But I didn't really appreciate the trash myself, but I had an opportunity to talk with a lot of folks whose responsibility it was, and they were actually thrilled to lead the way in cleaning it up. They said they just needed trash bags and maybe some help. So I was like, all right, let's go. I'll get the trash bags. I'll help. So we went and cleaned it up. That's kind of how that happened. We got a lot of positive feedback, and we continued to clean up. Paid gigs, volunteered gigs. We've been doing a lot of work. Work is actually pretty awesome. I love the feeling of being exhausted. And I, it's a cure for overthinking too. As far as the enforcement of kicking people off from public property, that's already on the books as a legal mechanism. City manager Mackey can make those rules, and the council can approve those rules. I don't necessarily have to read the law. It's chapter 24, Parks and Recreation, article 2. Of Hillsdale City Ordinance, the city manager is empowered to make such rules and regulations subject to the approval of city council. And that refers to public property. So essentially, he can come up with the rules. You all can say, yeah, Dave, good job. We'll do that. And that's kind of what we're doing right now. The ban is already in effect. The ban portion is already in effect. And yes, I do appreciate if the city wants to expand its ability to take care of eyesores around town. That would be greatly appreciated. I enjoy that work. Mr. Soha, I think you enjoy that work, right? Like, I saw you out edging your curbs and sweeping the garden, like, with an orange vest and an orange hat so you didn't get peeled by a traffic. But, you know, that's appreciated. I'm glad you set that good example on your own private property. That's kind of what I was trying to do with the help of other homeless folks in the woods. They wanted to take responsibility, like that was their home, and they stepped up and did it when called the task. So as of right now, I mean, I don't think you're getting in trouble either for passing this ordinance, because a lot of them...
Are you tired, son, buddy?
Thanks.
It's all right, James.
That's all right. But there's already mechanisms on the books to take care of the ban of public property that's already enforced.
Hi, I'm Deva Lawson, and I'm a visitor. I live in Jefferson Township. Can I speak?
No.
Okay. All right. I just want to say, I'm not for that ordinance. I hear both sides, loud and clear. I think that from what Adam, your Adam, has said, that he was kind of torn between. So I think that you would be doing a disservice to everybody in this, back here behind me, because we don't know the right choices. We don't know what to do. They don't know, you don't know. But I think you owe it to everybody in here to take that back, to take this and take it back, and really think, well, everybody has said here, because there's been some great ideals on this side and on this side. So I think that you owe it to everybody to go back, because even our mayor, he understands. I understand totally, right where he is. I had a brother who was homeless for 30 years. I know. I've lived homeless, so I know. And my heart is for the homeless. Not every homeless person is a criminal. And so we really need to take that back to all these people. That, because I've met one lady that, she's both, that you've already made your decision. I hope to God you haven't made your decision yet, because you've got a lot of voices out here who invited us to come, to hear us. So please, hear everybody here. Take it back, make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Deva.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Can I just say one more thing?
No.
Well, I'm going to say, as I leave, because I have to use the restroom, but if you guys cared so much about the dirty trash everywhere, stop throwing it outside your windows, and if you care about people's lives, then help them.
She's not coming back in here. She's always disrespectful every time she comes in here. Okay, sorry.
I understand. As the great philosopher Bill Clinton said, "I feel your pain." Good evening, I'm Father Stephen Allen. I'm a resident of Ward 4. I am self-evidently a Purgymen, but don't worry, I'm not going to beat you over there with any Bible verses. I rise to speak in support of the proposed ordinance. This is sensible legislation designed to preserve the safety, order, and cleanliness of our public property, and to avoid unnecessary burdens placed on our understaffed city departments charged with maintaining the city's much-taxed infrastructure. Once the safety and order of our community are secure, we can all work together to help those who, due to various misfortunes, may now lack of a settled place of dwelling. Personal charity, personal charity, love shown to one's neighbor one-on-one, can take place in all kinds of situations, ranging from good order to complete chaos. But effective charity as public policy can only be built on the foundation of a prudent and stable social order erected with a clear knowledge of the limitations of the resources of our community. Please favor this ordinance with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Seize them, we'll close the podium. And bring it to the council table. And bring it to the council table. Ladies and gentlemen, anybody have anything to add? Or any thoughts, Councilman Church?
Number one, the homeless are US citizens. And what we've got going down south, we're hearing all that, these are US citizens, they've been here. Some do have drug problems, not all of them, some are just out of their luck. I think if we do pass something like this, we definitely need to mark the city properties, where city properties are with signage. Because they're not going to know what is public and which is private. We need to do that. I do believe we also need to make it a civil fine, so they don't have a criminal record on them, which would hurt them for housing and when they get out of the hole they're in. I don't want to throw them in deeper, and that's why I cannot support this.
Thank you, Councilman Church. Anybody else have anything? Councilman Strutwell?
Yeah, I would just, you know, there's a lot of discussion. You know, no one's trying to compliment anybody. And you know, Mr. Mackey, his budget was 140 pages long. We're not a penny in here to help the homeless, that's not what we're here for, what our job is, is public safety. Straight up. And today, we had a Zoom call with, what do you name it, Jessica Marys? Who's part of the Michigan Balance School, who oversees these programs as the state level. We talked about a little stick, this is a little stick to kind of help people get the help they need. And she agreed, because they have the big carrot. Now, we have a $3 million budget here, like I said earlier, designed to help everybody in the community, whether it be in the airport, whether it be a park, a beach, whatever. Everybody benefits from it. The action, the, yeah, the Community Action Agency combines Hillsdale, Jackson, and Lenray County. Their budget is $22.6 million. So this ordinance does not stop, does not limit, does not slow down any of the great help that's going on to help people that need help. It doesn't do that, we don't do anything to deter that. And what, what Jessica said today was she, they're flexible, they're going to start flexing maybe more resources down here for these organizationals, these organizations to help even more, which is great work. And Councilman Soha made a point, what tripped that call was this ordinance. Which is good, it's a little, little tiny stick, we need to move, we need to move. And again, there's lots of great work that we can do, there's lots of great recommendations we have. And I encourage everybody here to get engaged with the Action Community Center, because they could probably use the help, or they could probably answer some of these questions. Because that is not our role, our role simply is public safety. And again, we have a $3 million budget, 140 pages here, not one penny, not one penny can we do to support that. So we need to support public safety. Period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Strutwell, I think we all knew how this meeting was going to go, that we would get lots of passionate comments from lots of very concerned residents, which we love having people up here, but we hear a lot about the dignity of the homeless, you know, what this community needs in terms of how we can help the homeless. And those are all very important things. And, but that was never the purpose of the homeless task force, was never to like build a shelter, or it was always going to come from a public safety mechanism. And that's only because of the resources that we have at our, at our hands that, I mean, if we're going to go out there and build Rome, we're going to fail. But we were always supposed to look at this from a public safety standpoint. And then this particular ordinance, we're looking at one thing, oh wait, it's not. And you know, this has a lot to do with what my apprehensions with it are, is it doesn't, it's, we, we don't, we don't get to say who can go, come and go in our parks. We don't get to say who can walk on our trails. This ordinance will do nothing about that. What it did do was it, just the threat of the ordinance spurred a lot of people into action. But as we saw, we did probably, right, we did for sure have some homeless that were camping on public land. With the threat of the ordinance, they moved to private property. They're still in the community, I'm sure people are still spending time on trails, I'm sure people are still, still spending time in parks, and they have the right to do that, because those are public spaces and they are members of the public. So... Did you have something, Councilman Wolf, from Father?
No, I, I was just saying that, um, if, I, my belief is we should delay this, because I would like to offer the amendments that I talked about earlier, about making it so that it would be a, um, not, not be a criminal offense, but rather just an infraction with fine, so they don't have it on the record. And so how to develop that, maybe we want to take a little bit of extra time to talk that through. But I guess I'm willing to go along a bit. But if there's, there's a motion to vote on this now, I'm going to make a motion to amend it, so that it does what I was thinking about. But I would not be opposed to delaying this, to vote this out.
I, I'm not opposed to that either. I do think that the amendment in terms of changing it into a civil infraction is a good compromise. And I think it respects both sides of the argument. I think it also still would allow our police officers to make contact, say, you shouldn't, you're not allowed to camp here. Here are resources that the homeless task force is putting together, or whatever. The bridge we cross when we come to that. I do think that that is a fair compromise, because I'll... I'm not sure, I have great apprehensions about voting for it either way, but I think that's a compromise that I can be in favor of, so. Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor, I am, I'm amenable to the changing of the language to, from misdemeanor to civil infraction with fines and working in service. The city is responsible for the city. The public is responsible for the people. Alright, there's not enough money in any government coffers to alleviate any difficult situations among the people. And it should not, and is not, the government's responsibility to take care of people who have fallen on hard times. It's our responsibility as a community to help. And Mrs. has been amazing in her efforts to that end, and I applaud them. And I applaud the cleanup efforts that James has headed. But you know, we, we forget the reason why he had to clean up in the first place. Alright, and then we forget that all the goods and services that the gentleman who said he would refuse to comply to an order, that, that direct defiance is unfortunate, in my opinion. But, um, you know, the reason that, that I am so in favor of passing an ordinance is because I pay property taxes to the city. How is that fair to me and all the other property, property tax paying citizens of Hillsdale? And, and people who are apartment dwellers pay taxes indirectly through their rent. How is it fair of us? That men and women can just arbitrarily camp on public property because they've fallen on hard times, when there are goods and services and, and things that are available? Yeah, I know it's hard and there's a lot of paperwork, I get that, that's not our fault. That's the state's fault. And, and, and this call we had today, God bless the Community Action Agency and what they're trying to accomplish, but there's so much bureaucracy and red tape, it makes things very difficult. And then the laws have been passed to favor tenants over landlords' rights. So landlords are apprehended to open their homes, especially when there's a tendency for the homes or their apartments to be abused. And then who, who puts the vote for that? For example, there was a home here in Hillsdale that sold recently, and it had five or six apartments in it. And the man who bought it, bought it as an investment, wanted to get it empty so that he could put money in it to re-rentmate it. He owned that home for six months without one penny of renting in it. And he had to cover all of the expenses for the heating and cooling over the winter, because it's law, and he does that, people are living there. That, that's not a fair and amenable situation. And all these things are compounding the, the problem and difficulty that we face here as a community. But what I want to remind you is, what Father reminded us of, is that it's, it's public policy and personal philanthropy. And I am pushing this forward as a public policy measure, that we as a community would prefer people not to camp and make the public land their permanent residence. If you, if you fall on hard times, go, go to M C B, people know where I live. You know, I mean, ask for help, I'm not saying I will help, I'm just saying ask for help. Now I have helped. But I, I, we, we as a community need to get together. Alright, I, I, I am very familiar with this on a very intimate level, with the drugs and the homelessness. So it's not something that I hate, I hate, I don't despise people, or hate them. I, I would be a friend to you, ask James, we've had good conversations, and we've had good, um, differences, right? So I mean, um, but, but there is a necessary thing here, that, that was brought up twice today, the, the thing about the cracks in the windows, the broken windows, and it becoming a compounding problem. The reason that New York City has devolved into the cesspool that it is now, I mean, it was rescued out of that because they took care of the cracks. And, and now they've allowed the cracks to come back in. And, and it's the same with Portland and all the other three great cities. And I know we're nowhere near that size or ability, but we also are nowhere near that in our budget. Alright, the, the budget for the city of Hillsdale is 15 million. And somebody brought up the airport, the airport's funded by the FAA. That money is, is, it flows from the federal government into our city specifically for the airport. We're not allowed to spend it on anything else. But if it's, if, if it's there for us to spend on the airport, then we absolutely should spend it on the airport and improve that for the good of the community. Alright, and so that, that's a non sequitur. What, what I'm saying here is, we have people, we have the task force, people that are passionate about helping. And I urge you as a community, us as a community, I urge us to get together and, and help ameliorate the situation by finding solutions. And at the same time, the men and women who find themselves having to live in a tent must be willing to do the hard work to get out of that, that position and situation that is hard. In one of the emails we received concerning this, and I don't have it up, and I would not like to search for it right now, so, to take the time, but in one of those emails, there was one young woman who was helped four times and refused it. And then we're the bad guys, because we want to say, no, that's not acceptable behavior. I, I don't, I don't appreciate that. And I also don't appreciate the fact that people who have found themselves on hard time are elevated to a status above people who are trying to raise their children. And that, that they deserve more credence and, and more love and more acceptance than the family that's trying to raise their four children and go to the Mrs. Stock's Park and, and not, not be intimidated by the men that are congregated in the gazebo there for 14 hours a day, with all their belongings. How, how is that okay? I, I have had a number of people tell me they, they don't want to go there anymore, and that was echoed here tonight. And that's unfortunate, and that, that shouldn't be. And the fact that any of us think that it's acceptable that our parks are places that people will avoid now is unfortunate, in my opinion. This ordinance, it's like what Councilman Strutwell said, it's, it's a stick that's, it's beginning to get, and look at it, we've got 100 people in here talking about this, right? The community is on fire to find a solution. Well, let's do that together, and let's allow the city to maintain the rule of law and the integrity of our, of our institutions so that more people will continue to want to make Hillsdale homeless. I would absolutely favor and encourage an amendment to the ordinance. I believe it's section 5, changing the violation from misdemeanor to civil infraction. Because like I said at the beginning, it's not my intention, or any of us out here, our intention, to criminalize anybody, we're far from it. I, I, I understand at an intimate level what felonies do to people trying to get employment, and misdemeanors are the same on, on this model of that. Alright, so I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but you have to understand where I'm coming from, from a public policy standpoint, that the city must maintain its integrity so that people will continue to invest in downtown, bring businesses here, so that people will continue to want to move here. Because Hillsdale is a great place, because of, of the people, all of the people. So if, if you would like to move forward with mending it, Councilman Sharp, if you would be amenable to changing your position if that amendment is in place, I would appreciate us doing that and coming to a vote tonight.
Any more discussion? Councilman Barrett?
I think the policy puts a tool in the toolbox for our public safety. And again, we sit, we're instituted in this ordinance for the safety of Hillsdale. And not to take away all the great things that the nonprofits have done in trying to get the homeless, the unsheltered, back into a, a lifestyle that is acceptable. James brought up a good point though, on, because cleaning up the past from the debris that was left, the city didn't have the authority to remove private property from public property. And part of the ordinance would allow the removal and confiscation of debris and personal property left. Also, the ordinance doesn't basically say homeless, and it just deals with unlawful camping. Which I know a lot of people that go camping on the weekends, so they have homes. And without the ordinance, you could have people go camping out in Owens Park. And with the authority, the, the city would not possess the authority to remove their personal property. And with the understanding of, uh, the other council people, as far as changing it from the misdemeanor to a civil infraction, I think it's a good compromise. And I think it's, again, it's just a tool in the toolbox that allows our public safety to really help the safety of all the inhabitants of Hillsdale. So from that reason, if they do the, change it to a civil infraction, I'll support it.
Councilman Wolf?
I just have one, one comment in, in that when we are supposed to take care of the poor, it doesn't say your government's supposed to, I mean, it just didn't say, oh yeah, you should go get your government to take care of the poor. And in fact, I talked about in my class about Scrooge. When, when Scrooge is first asked by the, by his nephews to come in and give, give him money, what does he say? He says, are there no poor houses? He's, he's saying basically, hey, isn't the government supposed to take care of the poor? Why are you coming here and asking me? And I think what we have to realize is that, no, we're supposed to help the poor. And through our churches, and through other organizations, individuals. And, and I, I, I don't see this ordinance as doing anything that harms, harms the homeless. And it doesn't even talk about with your homeless, right? It's just protecting property rights. But I think we do have to worry about what, what to do about the homeless. Particularly, I think, the homeless that have addiction problems. And that can be part of a broader, a broader issue. But it's, you know, it is our individual responsibility to help the poor, not to try to get, I mean, if I let the poor camp out in Owens Park, I'm not being, you know, I'm not being philanthropic. So I think we have to realize, you know, we're really trying to find truthful and...
Councilman Sharp?
I do not want to park in a public property camp in M C B.
I do not want to park in a public property camp in this city, a public property, period. If, we talked about that when this first was brought up, and I still feel that way. If we can make a compromise, I would go along with the change to work and make it a civil. Because I don't want to hurt them, their future down the road. I want them to have a chance. And I would definitely go along with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. That's where I'm at too. Politics is about compromise, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we take this order back to the Public Safety Subcommittee. And we'll break back to council.
Second?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stutcher, seconded by Councilman Sharp to send the proposal to Public Safety Committee for amend, the amendment process. All in favor? Oh, we have something to add here, Councilman Beer?
Couldn't we just change it here?
Yes, if we vote to approve it with an amendment to change the section that, section five, to, that it's a civil infraction, puny people buy a fine and not one hundred dollars, but one hundred and five hundred dollars. Period.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor right now, so we need to vote on that before we do it again. Councilman Pratt?
I have been neighbors with them for the last three or four weeks and if not, we're being moved out of them. Nobody's complaining. I live right next to the pier, so nothing.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we got a motion right now on the floor to send it to Public Safety Committee for amending the amendment process. Motion was by Councilman Stutcher, seconded by Councilman Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we get a voice vote?
Councilperson Soha?
No.
Stutcher?
Yes.
Beer?
No.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pratt?
Yes.
And Councilman Sharp?
Yes.
Appeals?
Okay. Okay, we only have twenty more minutes and all right, we've got no old business, we're moving to new business item. Letter A, Janson FOIA appeal. Attached is Mr. Janson's FOIA appeal. Oh, Dave, you're the FOIA officer. Go ahead.
Attached is Mr. Janson's FOIA appeal letter, his original FOIA request and account. The correspondence he indicates were not provided to him by Councilman Meladino in his original FOIA request. Mr. Janson is asking the city council to direct Councilman Meladino to provide him with all correspondence as requested in his original FOIA, as requested by law.
All right, thank you, Dave. I have a little issue with this right now. Is Josh here to verify whether he purposely left something out or he made a mistake or did you have something that you wanted to?
Two things. Thank you, Mayor. One, just some work.
I'm trying.
Appreciate that. And then two, can we bring pass to the, to the June fifth meeting? So, Councilman Meladino?
Let's ask. No?
Nope. There is a time apartment within which you must consider this appeal a written declaration. And it will be passed at the time.
That's fair.
Okay, Ted?
Okay. And my appeal, we have got this out of emails that Mr. Meladino elected not to provide to you. I appreciate that Mayor Stockford was in full compliance with the FOIA. George Ellen was in full compliance, but I think it did about a thousand pages to answer the FOIA. M C L fifteen two forty-three, section thirteen, talks about exceptions. Mr. Meladino's case did not meet those exceptions. One of, one of the largest law firms that deals with municipalities, Foster, Swift, Collins and Smith, in their publication talked about the library. If board members are using their home computers to conduct board visits, board members should be aware that these emails must be turned over in response to FOIA with the request. FOIA requests address the nature of the correspondence, not where the correspondence origin from. I'm not asking for any P M's, personal messages from social media, because that is exempt. And I have to assume for the emails written reference to the affairs of the library. Michigan Supreme Court in two thousand and seven, Cal State University Detroit, says, what we're talking about does not meet the frank communications exception. I can, I got thirty pages of stuff, but it's late in the night and I don't want to, and burning it for anymore. I'm just asking the council to direct him to comply with the FOIA just as Mr. Ellen did, just as Mayor Stockford did.
Ted, do you think that this, these emails that it appears that you got from George but didn't get from Josh, do you feel like there's any redundancy since they're, since you got them from George? Now that they're public records in the council packet, like we need to?
There could be other records that Mr. Meladino had with other people, not just George. Okay, that was, believe the famous email he sent out about the library being a rumor. We don't have the complete email on that one. That's what I'm asking for. That's what I expect Mr. Meladino to provide as per law. Conditions of the library board, state board, says he's compliant with all FOIA, compliant with all state laws. That's the condition of him being a trustee for the library board. So I'm asking that he be ordered to comply per state law.
Tom, can you give us some direction? I feel funny about just without Josh here to say, I mean, I've had, you know, I, we do these FOIAs and sometimes it takes me hours to go through all my emails to make sure I'm leaving stuff out, so.
Yeah, so primarily what Mr. Meladino needs to do, and it's my understanding he did, is conduct a fake search of his emails. The only use, search terms that would be most likely to turn up things that were responsive to Mr. Janson's request. So without him to say what he used, it's difficult for me to tell you whether or not what he did was sufficient. I think what Mr. Janson's asking for is basically for the council to maybe gave that gift. Mr. Meladino did fail to turn over something that would fall within confines of what Mr. Janson asked for and that Mr. Meladino has, that he do have. Now, there are two parts to it. One is, is it a public record, right? And the second part is, is it subject to an exemption, right? You don't get any exemptions or exceptions unless you first determine that the communication is in fact a public record. So there may be things that he has that don't constitute a public record. Mr. Janson's alluding to some of those kinds of things, things that are personal messages that could have, you know, like if I'm talking to my buddy about my feelings might be about something that's before the council, for example. I remember the council, but it hasn't anything to do with me formulating any public policy or talking to constituents. That wouldn't be considered a public record. Things from my own personal needs wouldn't be considered a public record. So you could indicate that to Mr. Meladino, maybe he does or doesn't have anything additional. My assumption is that if he had other things, he would use that one. So he's kind of left you a little bit of a wish because you don't know what kind of search that you may have made. But you can basically ask him to check. Or you could deny the appeal on the basis that you believe that Mr. Meladino agrees with it. Again, it's hard to do that too, even to tell what, what he did to get it.
I, again, I'm not a witness to his activity, but I, I need to talk to Josh. He was a bit frustrated. He told me he spent two days, took a day off work to go through everything to make sure he had that written in his request. But the council was, that would you also be issued a city email account? So when these FOIAs come through, it's not on my personal records that you keep going through. But Josh did tell me he spent two full days and took a day off work to comply with the FOIA request.
Okay. Just to echo that, that is best practice, is that you don't use outside email addresses, personal email to do business when you're not in a public body. Because you do two things. You only expose your, your personal email account or this outside email account to being subject to review FOIA requests. And second of all, if there's a lawsuit and gets subpoenaed, they, they might be able to look through all your emails to see what you do or don't have. Or at least you make it harder on the lawyer, represent you, to have to go through and determine what is or isn't responsive to this subpoena. So if you have things in a, in a separate set of email addresses that are issued by that public body that you only use for those communications, that's helpful in this process.
Well, we don't have city email addresses, so.
Well, you could issue ones that are even through Gmail or something like that that you create that are created by the city for you and assigned to you on the basis that those are only the email addresses that you use for city business.
Just out of curiosity, was all the library board voided or just certain people? And if you're looking for information, wouldn't you request the entire library board? So my, my first question is, was the entire library board voided?
Well, so this didn't have anything to do with Mr. Janson's appeal. Because he's just saying, I asked for records for Mr. Meladino. And I don't think that he gave me everything he might have, because I got some from somebody else that was giving them.
And primarily, I came across emails that he did not disclose.
But, but to answer your question, I'm sorry, to answer your question, I don't know. I, I saw the one, the request for Mr. Allen, the request to Mr. Meladino. I don't know if he made any other requests. Those were the only two that I don't look through.
Okay, with all the FOIA appeals we've ever had, it's people asking for their money back because they had to pay for FOIAs, so. I don't know how to handle this without Josh being here to answer for whether or not he purposely left stuff out in his emails. Or, Councilman Sharp? Well, we want to be transparent. That's what we keep hearing from the public. We want to be transparent in council, so it's one of those deals, do we, is he hiding something? I don't know. I don't go get his emails. I don't want to look at his emails. But if you don't feel, you feel there's something missing, then maybe, oh boy. I know what a FOIA feels like, trust me.
Okay, the Michigan Supreme Court has ruled when it comes to yes or no, that disclosure is the preferred avenue to go. And that was the reason we had FOIA in the start of it, is to get disclosure, not to hide stuff. So right now, Supreme Court says, he's arguing to disclose whatever else is missing. Obviously, there is other things maybe missing. That's why I'm asking him to provide it. They don't have to go through Mr. Allen's emails or other people's emails to say, oh, okay, there's some more stuff. Obviously, he did not go through all his emails diligently as shown to you and he said this was provided with the appeal. So we can, you know, live by the law or the north. That's going to be the council's decision.
Dave?
Mayor and council, what I would recommend, and this is just as FOIA coordinator is, make a motion and asking Mr. Councilman Meladino to, to reexamine and make sure that he provided Mr. Janson with all his FOIA-able emails. That would be the first start is have them reexamined and make sure he did not miss anything inadvertently or assume anything would be inadvertently. Because I do know that, you know, what he provided, you know, was a pretty big stack and as, as Mr. Allen did as well. And, you know, we're talking probably hundreds of emails potentially. You know, one could easily miss one or two. So just asking.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just tell Josh he needs to look over his emails again.
So you'll need to make a motion on sustaining the appeal in effect by asking Mr. Meladino to do that so that you're dispensing his appeal. Was the other alternative was to deny the appeal, so you make the record clear as to what you're trying?
I move to do a, the city manager suggested. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to ask Councilman Meladino to go through his emails. Revisit his emails. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Voice vote?
Councilperson Stutcher?
No.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
No.
Stockford?
No.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
No. My own. Not serving him.
I'll ask the other ladies. Thank you, Ted.
Yes, Mayor. I'm glad you uphold the law for your advice.
All right, we'll move on. New business item, letter B, twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer lining.
Six minutes.
So on, on April eighteenth, we received four bids in response to an advertised request for bids for fifty-six hundred millimeter feet of sewer light, sewer pipe lining. Again, we received four bids. And Instaform Technologies was a little bidder at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. We have used them before on, up by the bowling alley when we had that issue with over there. We've been satisfied with the work. So staff is requesting the council's order to approve an amount up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is the two hundred and fifty-five thousand plus a contingency of nineteen thousand for a total of two hundred and seventy-five thousand to award a bid to Instaform. To start a sewer lining project later this year. This has been approved by the county board.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Councilman Soha?
Is this, is this for this budget or next one?
This is, will probably span both. Because they probably won't get it all done within this limited year. But it, it does come out of, in twenty twenty-one, we actually had the entire system camera. And we go where we have collapsed and like where this particular treatment will give us many, many years of change.
All of them, so this is, we, we can afford this in the budgetary process?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Move to accept the city's recommendation for Instaform Technologies to be the second?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to go with the low bidder, Instaform Technologies USA LLC. Can I get a roll of calls to be put?
Yes. Councilperson Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Stockford?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stutcher?
Yes.
All of her?
Thank you, Katie. All right, we'll move on to item letter C, Hillsdale County Historical Society gaining license approval. This is not exposed, same stuff here. Hillsdale County Historical Society, domestic nonprofit corporation operating in the state of Michigan, desires to request a charitable gaming license from the state in order to hold raffles in the future to raise money for their organizations. In order to apply for a license, it is required that they submit as part of their qualification information a resolution passed by the local body of government stating their organization is a recognized nonprofit organization in the community. Seems easy enough? Yes, sir.
Is it a recognized nonprofit?
Yes, they will.
Yeah, Historical Society. Sure, Historical Society.
One, two, three.
Second?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Wolfram. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to item, letter D, declare a local disaster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, resolution actually comes out of the February twenty-second storm event, um, which took all the VPU electric customers out of service for a period of time. It was encouraged by Commissioner, um, Ingalls to kind of step this towards, um, the state level. And as we've been told, um, that the event did not necessarily qualify as a disaster, which will allow us to receive potential reimbursement. So in working with, um, Mr. Ingalls, we decided to take an approach where we started off, uh, with a disaster declaration from the VPU board. And to you, um, asking you to make that declaration to the county commission, who will then make the declaration to the state. And in the hopes that, you know, this, this will be our, our last ditch effort to try to get, um, this storm recognized and the, and potentially help with some, offset some of the expenses we incurred from it, which totals between the VPU and the city, pretty darn close to half a million dollars, uh, we've got, uh, expenses. Um, so we're asking that you pass this resolution so that we can forward it to the county commission um, and ask them to do the same to the state.
Okay, any questions?
So moved to pass to the second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Yep. All right, no, uh, no proclamations, one appointment, Shaintry Commission, Gary Stack, which, yes, you guys all know Gary was our city forester forever, so he'd be a great addition to the Shaintry. So, commission. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We will move into general public comment. I heard. We might, we're gonna need a, a motion on the floor to continue the meeting.
So moved.
Support. Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Veer to continue the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll continue on. We'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please leave your comments for three minutes. Please leave your trips to three minutes. Please leave your trips to one of the podium, and you may speak on anything you like at this time. Podium's now open.
I'm sorry, I'll be so brief. I just would like to understand what happens in a civil infraction situation with the proposed ordinance, uh, when they're given a civil infraction. If they don't pay, are they allowed to be moved at that point? I just would like to share that better. Is that an appropriate thing to ask right now? I could also contact somebody via email. I just thought it'd be interesting.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get back to you about it. Is, is that okay?
That's totally fine. I just would like to know, yeah, like what is the procedures for giving the infraction? What if the person is a pay? Are they allowed to move off of the property when they're camping? That's what I'd like to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any more public comment?
I don't come up to your guys' meetings ever, so I, I did have something that I did want to comment on. I actually came up to comment on the budget, but I, I just couldn't get out of, out of the house at the time. A couple of things from the meeting. Uh, litter, uh, in front of Davis Middle School. Uh, I've asked the school board and, uh, public utilities or public, uh, services, hey, can we just get a trash can out there so people have a trash can and they're just not, you know, compulsed to just throw it on the ground? Uh, shared a couple of emails. Uh, looks like the email was pointed towards Vonra, having to reach out to public services. Um, that's where it kind of stalled out, so I just wanted to mention that. Uh, portable AC units are not very efficient. Uh, you might want to look into a mini split system. It would be very inexpensive. There's tons of them on Facebook Marketplace. Uh, when you did have a larger population in the room, it would be able to cool it more effectively and make it a more pleasant situation for everybody. I was actually sitting out back. It was so hot. Um, maybe you guys could consider a mechanism to limit the comments when you reach a certain density uh at your meetings, say, over a hundred people, you limit the comments to two minutes. Over a hundred and fifty people, you limit the comments to a minute. That was a long meeting for y'all. Uh, and then this is, I'm gonna be honest, this is a really passionate topic for me. I apologize if I use my big voice a little bit. My hands are shaking a little bit. Um, public safety is not the government's responsibility. Okay, it, it is, it's been ruled in the Supreme Court nineteen eighty-nine, uh, Winnebago County uh versus, or sorry, DeShaney versus Winnebago County. And it's clear, the Supreme Court says that this is not your responsibility. And when I made my comments earlier, it wasn't a, necessarily a safety-based comment, although I was trying to allude to the fact that I see some unsafe things. It was a, I own property here and I'd like to see my property values maintained comment. I'm literally your direct neighbor across the street. Um, so that, that was the root of my comments there, and I think that leads me to the school resource officer, which I wanted to talk about. Again, please stop me if I'm, I'm past my, my point, but I'm concerned about my son's Fourth and Fifth Amendment rights when he's behind locked doors. Uh, being an eleven-year-old, dealing with law enforcement, I'm concerned about the culture it creates in the schools. Uh, I'm concerned about the fact that the schools are not in good shape and we're putting police in them. I think that sends the wrong message to everyone. I know that everyone who's made that decision has made it in the kindest of heart and the deepest of concern for the community, and I don't want to make you feel like, I think, you know, it's just, it's, you're doing your job. You think you're doing your job. And I get it, but you're creating situations that I don't think you have, uh, that you don't think you have understanding of, and maybe you should put in mechanisms so you have more control over, uh, the officer and the policy of the school when you have that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Any more public comment?
Yes, sir. Oh, thank you. Just real quick, I, again, I just want to thank you for your service. This was a long meeting, and I want to commend you all for your poker faces. So I'm, I'm sitting back here hearing things. I don't, you know, my face is contorting, and I just look up here and all of your faces were just so respectful, even with viewpoints that were probably different than yours. So I just want to thank you for your service and for your labor of love for our city these past three hours.
Thank you, David. Any more public comment?
Just quickly, uh, I want to go home, I need to thank you, Cindy, for coming up and volunteering as a private citizen alongside some homeless folks who live around town. A lot of great, uh, efforts have been commenced. Thanks for being a good neighbor. Apparently, you live up the hill. I think camping is kind of great, actually, you know, very peaceful way to sleep and the fresh air and all that. I wouldn't mind having a, a house, but as of right now, I feel pretty safe where I'm at. And things are moving forward for me because there's been housing available. Just to speak quickly about the ordinance, uh, the ideation there, I think originated from that, the idea to protect the image of the city, and there's economic reasons for doing that. Um, and it just appeals to our aspirations to want a clean-looking city, I would hope. So we heard a little bit about broken windows. Uh, Michael Jordan, who spoke earlier, who's also been coming out with Cindy, retired college professor, he, he asked me the other day, well, would it work the other way too? Like if enough people were really taking pristine care of their property, would that also have a, a, a blow-off effect on folks? And I, I think it would. So along those lines, not only should we be looking at stopping camping in some of these places, but how do we make these places also very useful and, and put them to their highest vest uses and make them attractive so people can actually walk through them as well? Uh, the one place that we're kicking folks out of is a wetland. It's not very useful at the moment, but it could be developed to be a, a better place for people to come and get. So instead of just kicking folks out, like, put some plans for how to use these public properties that you're concerned about. Not necessarily as parks, but for higher and better use as well.
Thank you, James. Any more public comment? Seeing the closing podium, we'll move into the city management report. David?
Mayor, I am going to pass my report tonight given time.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. All right, comms coming. Want to adjourn? Motion on the floor, by myself, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. You adjourn.